Good morning, everyone. We're glad that you could join us this morning for the completion of our EQC meeting today, February 4th. For the record, we will let the record show that all our commissioners are present. And we are pleased to get underway this morning with the first 2022 legislative session updates. So Director Whitman and Nancy Bennett, I think, are going to kick us off this morning. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, and I think Stephanie is going to bring up the presentation. So, good morning Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso, and members of the Commission. I'm Nancy Bennett, Policy and External Affairs Manager, and I am here this morning to share a brief update on the 2022 legislative session which kicked off earlier this week. We were just talking about it. It's been a full and busy week already. So let's go to the next slide, please. So just a reminder, even numbered years, Oregon holds a 35-day session, and the primary focus is supposed to be on legislative tweaks and reconciling budget issues. Sometimes it gets a little more expansive than that. But as has been past practice recently, anyway, committee hearings are being held remotely, and voting is going to be taking place in person. And I think, you know, just to mention something about the remote nature of the session, I think it also has an impact on legislators because they don't have the opportunity for as many hallway conversations. So when I'm checking in with them and asking, "What are you hearing about this?", they're like, "Not much yet" because they don't have that opportunity. So it continues to be, I think, a challenge for everybody to sort of share information, but we carry on. So there's always a lot of ambition, I think, at the beginning of a session, but the limited number of bills, there's two per legislator in committee bills. The governor also gets some bills, sort of helps keep things a bit more manageable. One thing that's a bit unique is there's just so many new legislators, and I think it's unique for this particular cycle, time in a cycle, where normally, you know, after an election, you have lots of new faces. But here we are sort of midstream. So one sort of really notable departure is Speaker Kotek, Senator Betsy Johnson, and Minority Leader Christine Drazen all resigned to run for governor. And those are sort of three very important people that were in the legislature. So they're not there and have been replaced with new folks. And just again, lots of sort of midstream changes, just a couple I'll mention. Senator Chuck Riley resigned at the end of last year, and Representative Janine Solman got his appointment in the Senate. So she's someone we've worked closely with on recycling. Rachel Armitage is filling Senator Betsy Johnson's old seat. And then Travis Nelson was appointed to fill the Kotek seat. So lots of new faces, even legislators say they don't know everybody yet, and it's really different. I think another sort of really interesting development is new leadership. And I'm sure all of you have read about that we have a new speaker, Dan Rayfield. He had been one of the co-chairs of Ways and Means. And so he brings a lot of budget experience. And sorry, I'm getting a little frog in my throat. Representative Julie Fahey was elected House Majority Leader, and then Representative Vicki Brice Iverson has been elected to lead the House Republican Caucus. We've also heard that Peter Courtney is not going to seek reelection, so there's going to be big changes in Senate leadership coming up. So there's just sort of a feeling, I guess, I want to convey that there's, you know, a lot of change, a lot of new folks. But I think also, you know, hopefully a sense of cooperation, I'm hoping, as we sort of dive into this session. Let's go to the next slide. So DEQ does not have any agency bills this session, but we do have several budget requests, and I'm going to touch on a couple of these things. The state budget continues to be in an exceptionally strong position right now, and there's a significant surplus. Of course, there's no shortage of how to spend all of those dollars. And of course, we have a few ideas of our own. So we will be presenting to the Natural Resources Subcommittee on Ways and Means on Monday, and we'll specifically be focusing on our lab. We're seeking $500,000 to address some capital expenses, specifically repairing and replacing some aging lab equipment. It's just not something that we have sort of in our regular budget, and it's a growing challenge for us. And we're also seeking funding and authorization for an additional manager. And I think we will be talking more about this to the committee, but just, you know, we've continued to add new programs to the lab, add some new staff, but we haven't really added the requisite manager level. And we've now got a situation where we have, you know, managers supervising 20 staff or just a really sort of untenable situation, especially with sort of the size and complexity of DEQ's lab. So we're really hoping to take advantage of sort of maybe some of these one-time funds that we can address some of those issues. A second request is related to environmental justice, and we're going to be talking a lot more about this topic at different points along the way this morning. So just to say that we are joined with our partners at the Oregon Health Authority and the Department of Administrative Services in requesting resources to fund the development of an environmental justice mapping tool. And so again, we'll talk a little bit more about this. And then finally, I'm going to just mention it briefly. It's not all that interesting, which is that we are requesting some funds to fill up budget gap related to some increased charges we have to house our data at the state data center. So those are sort of some things that we'll be talking about with the Ways and Means Committee in the coming days. Next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the key legislative issues to watch that we're tracking, and certainly this is not an exhaustive list, but just sort of represents issues that have been getting hearings or maybe have a DEQ impact. And I have to say that as we were sort of developing this list, it keeps changing because things are just so in flux. And one day, an issue is up, and then it's not up anymore. But I'll just hit on a few things. So and I'm going to again, talk about the Environmental Justice Bill. This is a governor's priority bill, House Bill 4077. This is really a repeat of the bill that she introduced last session that didn't make it through the session. So we're trying again here in the short session. Also, Senate Bill 1567, this is sponsored by Senator Michael Dembrough. This bill would require large fuel storage facilities that are part of the critical energy hub along the Willamette to assess and mitigate risk from an earthquake. And DEQ would play a planning and review role through our emergency response program. And I think that we've all sort of identified that this is an enormous risk to the environment should those facilities fail and we don't have a plan for that. So we're starting that, or continuing, I should say, that discussion. There's a lot of interest in that, and Senator Dembrough is very passionate about making that happen. Another bill is Senate Bill 1558, Transportation Omnibus Bill. I would just mention that this continues to evolve for us. And one of the things, the most recent change to this is that there's an amendment that would give DEQ a slightly larger share of the privilege tax to support our EV rebate program. And right now, we get $12 million a year for that program. It's not going to be enough as more and more motorists seek electric vehicles, which is a problem that we want to have, right? We want as many EVs on the road. So we get sort of a flat $12 million, but under this proposed amendment, we would get 45% of those privileged tax allocations, or at least $12 million. So we'll maintain what we have, but potentially increase. And Director Whitman.
Thank you Chair George. Members of the Commission, for the record, Richard Whitman, DEQ Director. Yes, on this point, to put a little point of emphasis on this, we actually will run out of funds for rebates for EVs this year. And that's both a good thing and a bad thing. In the overall level of new car sales in the U.S. that are battery or plug-in electric vehicles is just about doubled last year. There was a very significant jump in EVs nationally. And Oregon was, along with California, really at the forefront of that.
Director, could you remind us? You said we're going to run out. Can you remind us what that initial level of investment was? I know we were told at one time, but I don't recall now.
It's $12 million a year, Chair George, that's available for those rebates. And we're, at the rate that applications are coming in right now, we do expect to run out of funds sometime later this year. So there is a rulemaking currently underway that will be coming to you, I believe, in September around... No, actually, I'm sorry, it's before then. There is a rulemaking, yeah, there is a rulemaking that is headed your way where we will be asking you to make some decisions about prioritization of how to allocate the funding that we do have for EV rebates. But at the same time, as Nancy has indicated, there is legislative interest in at least a modest increase in funding. So this is part of a bigger conversation that will occur both with you in May in the rulemaking, and then probably with the legislature in the long legislative session around this program. But it's a good news story, really, in that we are seeing a big surge in sales of electric vehicles in Oregon. Thanks.
Yeah, and thanks, Director. I would just mention that under this amendment, if we were to get, say, 45%, that would be about, based on recent allocations of the privilege tax, about $13.5 million. So it's a little bit more, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's a helpful step forward. I will see if it moves forward, that particular amendment. Just continuing, moving on, Senate Bill 1576, this is the mattress recycling program. I think we've talked about this before. This is Senator Manning's bill. It's been almost past the legislature last session. It didn't kind of at the very end, not because of controversy. It might have just, there were some last-minute issues, but it's back. And I think we do expect it to move forward. This would establish an extended producer responsibility program for mattresses, and DEQ would again play that oversight role. And then finally, Senate Bill 1501, the Private Forest Accords. We're going to talk more about that, and I've got others that are going to be able to share more about that in a minute. So next slide, please. So there are a couple of issues that I wanted to just dive into fairly briefly because they're very significant to DEQ. And of course, I want to invite the Director to also share his thoughts. So again, House Bill 4077, this is the Environmental Justice for All bill. So really, two components to this. One is expanding the capacity of the Environmental Justice Task Force, renaming it an Environmental Justice Council, enhancing the membership by adding a youth member, and then also, really importantly, adding staff resources to support the council. And I think about most boards and commissions do have support staff to help them function, and that's one thing that we've never really had for the Environmental Justice Task Force. So and they've done incredible work without that support, but I think it's really time that they have the agency support that they need. The second piece is creating this centralized mapping tool. And this is something I've mentioned. We've been working closely with Oregon Health Authority and with DASS, and also with the Institute of Natural Resources at Oregon State University on about creating this centralized mapping tool that would measure environmental science, health data, mapping it with socioeconomic information so that we can really start to understand, you know, that environmental burden in communities. And I've heard our Director talk about, right now, we're flying blind often in these situations, and having this additional information would be helpful in driving funding decisions and making other agency decisions. And I'll let the Director share more of his feelings on that.
Director Whitman.
Thank you Chair George, and thanks Nancy. You know, this bill is a priority for the governor and for other agencies in Oregon, and not just DEQ. The Health Authority in particular, with all their work around public health equity, really desires a tool that allows us to understand more fully what the current burdens are on communities and how we affect those burdens, both potentially increase them or decrease them by being more intentional. We are doing some of this work already. We have a federal tool called EJ Screen, Environmental Justice Screen, that is a first-generation tool, not very sophisticated, has a lot of limitations, uses data that are, can be, create a misimpression, actually, of what the true impacts are. And so a federal EPA is working on a second-generation tool. And states, including Washington, and including a number of other states around the country, have developed tools that are more specific to individual states and the conditions in individual states, and frankly, the populations and communities in individual states. And so the purpose of this tool is to do that work here in Oregon, to give us a bit more of an Oregon-specific tool that allows us to be smart about decisions that we make. A lot of the, in particular, one of the reasons we're interested in this, and I think this goes for the Health Authority also, there is a lot of federal money coming into the state right now. And we are making decisions about where that money goes. And that's going to include some significant increase in funding for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, funds for cleanup activities around the state. And so having, you know, we're not going to have this tool necessarily operational for some of the nearer-term decisions, but some of that funding will be going on for the next five years. And so again, being smart about how we are distributing that in ways to both protect public health and the environment, which of course is our core mission, but also protect specific communities that have been burdened historically. So that's what this is about. And as I say, we're doing this to some extent now with the tool that we have, EJ Screen. And it would be, I think, really beneficial to everybody if we had a more updated tool to do this work. So.
Director, I have a question that we could probably follow up a little bit more offline. You made reference to some, a lot of federal money that's moving into the state and discussions that are occurring about that. One of the types of projects, you know, that are often kind of deferred due to the need for large investment is water quality impacts associated with dams, whether that be temperature or DO issues. Is there any discussion of with, you know, new large sets of money potentially addressing some of these problems, which sometimes do have rather large price tags to fix?
Yeah, Chair George, the Biden-Harris administration just released a, I believe it's 486-page guide to the bipartisan infrastructure law. And I say that, I'm not really meaning to poke at the federal government on this, but just to illustrate the complexity of your question. There are, I think, 176 different funding streams that will be coming to Oregon through this. And the governor has convened an infrastructure cabinet of certain state agency directors and representatives of local government and representatives of our Oregon tribes also to do our best to coordinate and assure that we're bringing resources to Oregon and that we're not leaving resources on the table, and that we're doing that in a smart way. So at the same time, the federal agencies also are receiving significant funding for all sorts of infrastructure work, and that includes US Department of Agriculture and RCS. I met with the state director and several other state agency directors yesterday to talk about this specifically on the water quality front and some very significant potential funding for water quality improvement efforts in the state. I believe the Corps, US Army Corps of Engineers, also is receiving significant additional funding, and we certainly will be talking to them about the issue you raise in terms of reservoir operations and ways of reducing, mitigating water quality impact. So for a service in terms of wildfire prevention and prescribed burning efforts, we talked yesterday about the smoke management plan. There's going to be a significant scaling up of prescribed burning and other work to reduce fuel loading. It's just, this is a generational opportunity and investment in all sorts of infrastructure, from gray infrastructure around concrete for bridges and wastewater treatment plants to green infrastructure. And there's a lot of work going on now to, again, coordinate, try to make sure that we're utilizing those resources wisely and also to engage with Oregonians so that they know kind of what's coming, what's going on, and can participate in helping decide, you know, what should get funded. So this does all relate back in a way to the environmental justice tool. And it's a piece of all this investment that's going on that we think about equity and try to improve equity and justice in the state. And, you know, we talk about environmental justice communities, and people immediately get the impression, for whatever reason, that we're not also thinking about rural communities and rural areas of state. But that is absolutely a major part of the conversation and work as well.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Let's go to the next slide. And this is kind of our final item, and I actually am calling in my lifelines here to help talk about this topic, which is, I think, our Director and also Jennifer Weigle on hand. But Senate Bill 1501, of course, is moving through the legislature right now. And I might let them, there's a lot of words on this slide, but I might let them sort of talk about, I know, talking to the governor's office and probably have a lot more sort of insider information. So I don't know, Richard or Jennifer, who wants to tackle this?
And Jennifer, I'm happy to defer to you on this, unless you want to talk really at a high level about what's going on right now in terms of the bill. But if you want to lead off here, that would be great.
Sure, I can start on that. Good morning, Chair George and members of the Commission. I'm Jennifer Weigle, I'm the Water Quality Administrator. With regard to Senate Bill 1501, there are just some summary, excuse me, bullet points here about the legislation that's been introduced to enact the Private Forest Accord agreements that were reached late last year, around the end of October. The legislation itself has had some initial hearings in this session. There's been another amendment that's been introduced. But in broad strokes, what this legislation does is, excuse me, sets out a framework and includes a number of kind of important aspects of the agreements that are summarized here, but then also then directs the Department of Forestry to develop implementing rules as part of kind of a comprehensive package to be adopted not later than the end of November of this year, and then submit an application for a habitat conservation plan by the end of this calendar year. So you will see in the legislation itself includes a lot of different categories of elements that were central to those accord agreements. So things along the lines of riparian measures protecting steep slopes, inventorying and rehabilitating roads, let's see, beaver protections, landslide-prone areas, et cetera. And then a lot of the specifics are then directed to be in the rulemaking process itself. Importantly, also in terms of the rulemaking that the Department or the Department of Forestry is directed to do, and then the board's role in all of that, the Board of Forestry's role, that is an expedited process. So it is intended to move quite quickly. DEQ does expect to be a part of that process. There are some also explicit acknowledgements within the legislation that calls out the relationship between the Commission and the board, and ensures to preserve the ability of the Commission to petition or to have that interaction as currently exists within the current statute and rules that govern that process between those two governing bodies of DEQ and the Department of Forestry. The other thing I will point out is that there is also a report that was just released yesterday that really contains a tremendous amount of detail about the expectations for the implementing regulations and also is tied to what's included in the current drafted legislation that is intended, that basically pulls in by reference, the rules shall be basically consistent with this report. So the report has all the details around riparian prescriptions, exactly how the inventory of roads and rehabilitation will be done, small woodland owner program that's being directed to be stood up by Department of Forestry, et cetera. So that report is expected to really govern the content of the rules going forward. And so that's a pretty voluminous document, it's about 180 pages of detail related to the expectations.
Thank you. Is that report available?
Yes, it was posted, we can share all of this with you all.
Thank you.
Director, do you have anything you want to add to this? We're a little bit over time, I've just noticed, so I want to keep moving on.
The only thing I'll add on this particular point is, this legislation is a second step on what will be multiple steps to completion of a proposed habitat conservation plan, which importantly, then has to be submitted to the federal fishery services for their approved review and approval. So there's a lot of work still yet to be done in terms of putting that application together. And, you know, it will be, I believe, next year sometime. And Jennifer can tell me if I got this right. Next year sometime would be the earliest that an application would actually go into the services.
Actually, by the end of the calendar year is what's being directed in the legislation and the agreements.
Okay, so that's what's driving the Board of Forestry rulemaking also. So there will be, the last point to make, though, is there will be a whole public process around the federal review of the proposed habitat conservation plan. Once the state is done with its work, along with the forest landowner community.
Vice Chair Barasso.
Thank you Chair George, and thank you all for the update. I just, there's a good bit here on this slide. And so I appreciate just hearing this and knowing that we have 35 days in our legislative session. I would just love to have a briefing on this separately. So just to make sure I'm tracking, because this connects to so much of our, connects to so much of our work and understanding this, as well as just the sequencing of everything you just described, both between the Habitat Conservation Plan and what's within this legislation. And maybe I'll leave it there. So I would just appreciate that, given that we just had legislative session this weekend and it went pretty quickly, and I know that this is a big one. I would just appreciate our briefing sometime here.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Vice Chair Barasso, we will set that up for upcoming meeting.
Okay, that's all that we have for this item, so we can move to the next one. And Stephanie, I guess I'll have you pull up the presentation. And good morning again, I'm back. You're going to see me a lot this morning, you get really tired of me. So good morning again, Chair George, I'm not sure if she's still there. Okay, Vice Chair Barasso and members of the Commission, I'm Nancy Bennett, Policy and External Affairs Manager. We are here to talk about the development of our agency request budget for the 2023-25 biennium, which sounds really far away, but it's not. I'm joined by my team, so we have Matt Davis. He's actually on a rotation with Northwest Region, but he's back today to walk us through air quality issues. Ryan Hoof is our Water Quality Lead- Ryan Hoof is our Water Quality Legislative Analyst, and Abby Beduris is our Land Quality Legislative Analyst. Let's go to the next slide, please. So what we're going to cover here over the next, maybe slightly less than an hour, is a little bit about the agency request budget timeline. I have a couple of sort of budget summary slides that are really just sort of context setting for us. Want to talk about some high level budget themes that we think are emerging, and then talks very specifically about some of the program needs that we've identified, and then a bit about stakeholder outreach. And I want to just say that it's really important to us in coming to you now to hear any comments you have, any questions. We have typically wanted to start, this is sort of the kickoff, I should say, really toward this process. So please don't hesitate to stop us as we're going through this or catch us later about anything that we've talked about. Let's go to the next slide, please. So this is the state budget development timeline. It's a two-year cycle. And I think the most important thing I want to point out is that we are in the orange phase, sort of down at the bottom of the page there, building the agency request budget. So importantly, you know, between now and September is really the time when we build this this request budget, and it's just a request budget. It's just what we want. It's not what's necessarily going to happen. But it's where we're putting forth what we think is the most important things for this agency. And, you know, we're gathering input from our programs, from you, our commission, from stakeholders, from community members in the public about what our priorities should be. So we'll submit this agency request budget to the governor, our current governor, Kate Brown. And then, of course, there's a governor's election and we'll have a new governor. And so that new governor will actually build the governor's recommended budget and submit that to the legislature. So there's a lot of uncertainty in some ways going forward. I think that's also, though, why it's really important to us to have a really good process for building our agency budget so that we can carry that forward and when we meet with the legislature next year. Let's go to the next slide. I want to talk about a couple of sort of budget-related slides. And really, this is context setting for you, just to help kind of build a little bit of a picture. So I have two slides, and there's really two takeaways from this. So the first one is on this FTE comparison, and this is actually a 20-year snapshot. And what's interesting is that you can see 20 years ago, DEQ actually had more staff. And we have sort of ebbed and flowed, you know, certainly during the state's recessionary times, or some very lean years for the agency, and we've been sort of building our way back toward a more adequate staffing level. What you see reflected in this past budget is actually the development of new programs that we're undertaking. So our recycling modernization, our climate program, sort of new wildfire responsibilities. And I think what I've noticed in my time at DEQ, which is about four years now, actually, is there's, I think, maybe not in all corners of the legislature, but a lot of confidence in DEQ, and I think a desire to to give DEQ responsibilities and see us as a key agency for addressing environmental issues in the state. So I, our workload continues to grow.
And Nancy, just before you move on, I want to take just a moment to to recognize that, because that doesn't just happen passively. It happens because a result of you and your team and Lisa and the rest of the members of that team. It happens because of the investment of Director Whitman and and his staff. And so this was was part of what I think a lot of us had hoped to see when we agreed to join the EQC. And I think it was a goal of of our director. And so I just really want to take a minute and thank the team. It's by being present, it's by developing those relationships, it's by establishing the credibility of DEQ staff and that responsiveness. And so I think that this is really a goal accomplished. And I want to be sure that that credit is given and received for for some really very hard and fine and necessary work. I always start our meetings with our mission. And this was a necessary part of putting DEQ in a position where they really can pursue and accomplish their mission. So I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in that effort. Vice Chair Barasan.
Thank you. And I think all of that is true, and as I look at sort of the 01, 03 numbers, 856. I also know we've taken on a big, more additional chunk of work in that period of time. I mean, I'm thinking just all the rulemaking we've done in the past four years. So in that exact same vein, it's, I think it'll, it'll always be as we're, we're taking actions. I really just want us to, I hope you all can keep reminding us of where we need those resources to continue in order to be able to do this work. And and in some ways, I know this is, I know everyone is in a crunch. So I'd love to, just at another point, a comparison of, I know these are the approved FTE. What is our actual field FTE alongside this in terms of understanding where, where, where we have both what's approved versus how many folks we actually have within the Bureau?
Great, yeah, we, we absolutely can provide that. And thank you, Chair, for your, your kind words. I, I, you know, certainly, I think DEQ has a really exceptional team. And, and it's not just, you know, us, it's, it's a, DEQ is a really hardworking agency, I have to say. And, you know, we haven't had a minute of slowdown even during the pandemic. It's just been a continual moving forward. And one thing, we can certainly provide some of those budgets, sort of where we are in terms of positions. We often anticipate that it will take time to hire, so we, we budget accordingly. So, so just we'll, we'll provide all that context. But let's go ahead and move to the next slide. And then I also like to talk a little bit about fund type and don't get too worried about numbers here. I don't want to talk about the specifics, but I just want to really convey to you and anybody else out there watching this really is that, you know, DEQ is primarily funded through other funds. And that's, you know, often fees, or it might be passed through dollars for things like in our air quality program, that might be the EV rebate, for example, that gets reflected there. The the sort of lighter green is that's general fund. And you can see that sort of across our different program categories, you know, we don't have a significant amount of general fund. And in fact, for natural resource agencies, there is, of the state general funds tends to be a pretty small pot of money that we're all sort of, I don't want to say we're competing against, but but a little bit. So it's, it's one of the challenges. We also, you can see for the federal funds, you know, that amount represents a fairly small amount of our budget. That might change. I think we're hopeful that some of that's going to change when the Biden-Harris administration. I don't know that that's been reflected yet. This, of course, is, you know, the current, current budget, which is what we have numbers for. But just kind of wanted to, again, sort of share this snapshot for you as we think about these, these funding requests that we're going to talk about here in a minute. Let's go on and move to the next slide. So when we're working on our budget, we always sort of, to me, themes always emerge about what are the things that, you know, we're going to prioritize and kind of be talking about at a high level with legislators and the public and others. So, and and so these are sort of some of the things, this isn't set in stone, but just sort of things that I think have emerged, you know. So first and foremost, I think, is environmental justice. And, you know, for us, it's really ensuring we have the capacity to engage community and that also we understand disparate impacts. And I think we're going to keep pressing on this issue, you know, until we get the resources we need to really do the job. And so you're going to keep hearing about this from us, I think, over the next couple of years here. A second theme for us is one we've talked about before, which is permit modernization. That's kind of the catch-all, which is we want to be really good at doing permits. We want to be timely. We want to make sure that we have, you know, adequate resources for inspection and compliance and sort of all the pieces that go with that. That often means fees, and that means that we really have to engage those stakeholders, and they have to be part of that conversation. But this is one that I think the agency's actually made significant progress in our backlogs and air quality and water quality. But, you know, we still have more to go, so we're going to keep talking about this. A third issue is climate change, and I think this is likely to become a bigger part of our agency work in the years ahead. And it's not just about, you know, developing programs to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And certainly, we are doing that and we'll continue to work on that. But it's also about preparing and planning for the impacts of climate change and where we're seeing that in terms of drought or ocean acidification or wildfire. And so there's, there's sort of a response side that we need to lean into more. The the fourth category here is protecting environment and public health. And really, the the other word that we wanted in here is in emergencies. There's just, there's a response that we want to be ready for, whether it's spills, whether we're dealing with, again, wildfire smoke, or just, you know, we had to sort of jump into area of work that we hadn't necessarily worked on before, maybe it's PFOS. There are just a lot of emerging issues. And so this is, for us, another key area we want to be ready for. And then finally, agency infrastructure, again, is a bit of a catch-all, but it's really about the health of the organization. It's about having the right people. It's about having equipment that we need. It's about, you know, maybe even the right workspace as we sort of, you know, return to a, maybe a slightly different working situation. So we're really looking at that, and I appreciate what Vice Chair Barasan had said earlier about kind of having the resources to actually carry out all of the the work and the responsibilities that we continue to have. So, so that's a piece. Let's go ahead and move to the next item, and I think I'm going to bring in my colleague, Matt Davis, here, and he's going to cover air quality for us.
Thanks, Nancy. Good morning, Chair George and Commissioners, for the record. Matt Davis, I'm pitch hitting today for my colleague Garrett Kransky, who's been doing this work since September, when I left to take a rotation in Northwest Region. So that's, all that's to say is I'm going to do my best. Garrett gave me great notes, and I, I'm happy to answer any questions you have and also may need to, you know, defer and follow up as needed. So I'm going to walk through the, some of the air quality division budget goals as we head into this 2325 budget development cycle. So the first is wildfire response and mitigation. As you know, the air quality program's job is to preserve and improve air quality in Oregon. And the increasing duration and intensity of the wildfire season is posing a really significant threat to air quality. And just to give you a quick sense of that, between 1990 and 2015, the number of days of poor air quality due to smoke increased tenfold in Southern Oregon and twentyfold in Eastern Oregon. And we play a really important role in addressing those air quality impacts by helping communities kind of understand when the smoke is going to hit and how hard through our monitoring network. We more recently have started to fund programs to develop community response plans. And we also increasingly are playing a role in implementing mitigation techniques during, that can be used during prescribed burns to promote less severe smoke events. So last session, 2021, the Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill 762, which we've talked a little bit about, and that provided DEQ limited funds to do this work. And in 2023, we plan to put forward some version of a package that would allow us to kind of build upon the, the, this initial phase and really start to build out a program more holistically. And specifically, that looks like making those limited duration positions we got last session permanent and increasing, increasing funding support for our laboratory monitoring and analysis work. We'd like to implement additional biomass utilization strategies so that those are opportunities to use and manage wood waste other than than burning it. So that's, you know, rerouting biomass for other, for other uses like cultivation torfaction and things like that. And then finally, we need resources and strategies to, to continue to assist the public in navigating both our burning regulations, but also the communications we distribute about smoke and the public health impacts. And the next opportunity area is transportation electrification and mobile sources. So the transportation sector is our single largest source of greenhouse gas emissions. Nearly 40% of the state emissions come from cars and trucks and other mobile sources. And we need to continue to evolve in our response with new strategies that are meant to address emissions from our personal vehicle use and freight movement. So you already talked a little bit this morning about the rebate program. I won't belabor that point. You know that the program is likely to be underfunded in the near term. And even aside from the current amendment in the short session, we expect that we'll be pursuing a proposal to increase the ongoing revenue that's provided for that program, potentially a pretty significant amount. And then, in addition to the rebate program for personal vehicles, we really need to modernize our incentive programs that we offer for medium and heavy duty trucks. And while those vehicles only account for 4% of the vehicles on the road, they're responsible for almost 25% of total greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector. And you all adopted the advanced clean truck rule at the tail end of 2021, which requires an increasing percentage of zero emission vehicles as a, as a percent of new vehicle sales in Oregon. And to support the rollout of that regulation, I, actually, you all talked quite a bit about the need to support the buyers, right, to make the, to make those purchases kind of pencil out from their perspective. So we would like to explore kind of modifications and expansions to our existing grant programs with kind of a pivot or a focus to providing funding to support the transition to zero emission vehicles. The next bullet you see on there is climate and greenhouse gas reduction. So again, in this space, you all took really historic and significant actions in 2021 to address climate change by adopting rules for the Climate Protection Program and accelerating the adoption of EVs through our changes you made to the Clean Fuels Program. And of course, we'll be returning to you later this year with a proposal to extend and expand that program. And we do expect to need additional resources to fully implement both of those, those programs or changes to those programs for clean fuels. We may need additional staff capacity to fully implement some of the new elements of the program that are focused on ensuring transportation electrification investments in frontline communities and also for public and tribally owned fleets. And then for the Climate Protection Program, we expect to, you know, we would benefit from resources that focus on continuing to build our internal capacity to successfully deliver the climate, community climate investments part of that program, which, as you know, is designed to improve equitable and community-focused investments across the state. And finally, the last bullet point relates to permit program modernization. And and for for air quality, that means our ACDP Title V and cleaner air organ permitting programs. And as we've talked about, you know, large stationary sources of emissions can create potential risks to human health and the environment. And increasingly, our own analyses are showing that those impacts are disproportionately burdened frontline communities. And the permit programs play a really important role in reducing those impacts by ensuring compliance with national ambient air quality standards, with hazardous air pollutant standards, and with our own state health risk-based regulations. And, you know, we really need to continue to modernize our programs by ensuring their resource to implement all these new and increasingly complex regulations, which are meant to protect public health, but also that we, you know, streamline those programs so the regulated entities can get their permit, you know, on time and understand what is entailed in it. I see Vice Chair Barasan's hand is raised. Should I?
Yeah, Vice Chair Barasan.
Thank you. This is just to remind myself and maybe the rest of us, on the Climate Protection Program and implementation there, I know that we received funding a couple, I want to say a couple of years ago. And is this, is this, is that part of the program general fund funded? And is there an expectation at some point that it will be fee, it will be fee funded?
Yeah, Vice Chair Barasan, the initial resources that were provided by the legislature in 2020 are ongoing and built into our budget and general fund. And part of the conversation about these additional resources is a examination of which elements might be appropriate for fee funding, you know, being funded through fees through the program and which, you know, might be more appropriate to remain on general funds. So I can't give you specifics other than to say that fees, establishing fees as part of the protection program is certainly kind of part of the conversation we want to have with you and stakeholders in the legislature.
Other, was there more on the modernization that you?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll have just a slightly more on the permit work that I'll just wrap up here. And and really, you know, the, I think the point being that, you know, the permit program continues to see increasing demands on it. We're, we're permitting more and more new sources every year. And while we continue to make progress on our permit renewal backlog, and that's happening at the same time that regulations for these sources are becoming increasingly complex, both for the agency to implement and for sources to comply with. So, you know, we really, we're really kind of prioritizing a package that seeks to kind of respond to those demands. We're really kind of prioritizing a package that seeks to kind of respond to those demands. To ensure we can give quality technical assistance that we're issuing high quality and really detailed permits that sufficiently. Explain all the requirements and ensure public health is being protected and do all of that in a in a timely way. So that's, that's all I have. Nancy, I think I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, let's go to the next slide, please. And Ryan, you are up.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Matt. And good morning to Chair George and Commissioners for the record. I'm Ryan Hoof, Water Quality Policy and Legislative Analyst. In working with our water quality programs, we've sought to capture a comprehensive assessment. Of what the needs are to successfully implement a range of pollution prevention, public health protection and customer service functions for all Oregonians. Some of the concepts that I'm going to share with you here today revisit requests from prior budget cycles. That were not authorized or only partially funded. While some represent areas of work where we have recently identified a need to more fully engage, but lack the resources to do so. These five bullets represent an initial synthesis of those ideas. The first four of which are organized by water quality subprogram area, whereas the fifth is more of a cross cutting theme. The first aims to enhance staffing capacity to meet our assessment programs responsibilities. To maintain an on time reporting system. This includes development of our integrated report. Which updates our state's three oh three D listing of impaired waters. Also, within this framework or this area of work, we've identified a specific need for GIS technical expertise. To focus on spatial data analysis and information mapping that would support both our assessment work, but also standards development activities. The second category listed here would support various permit service delivery functions and responsibilities. That are critical for preventing pollution from point sources. In 2019, DEQ identified a comprehensive package of enhancements. Needed in this particular area of our work and the legislature responded by authorizing about one third of what we had requested. Those resources combined with various process improvements have resulted in the program making some significant reductions. In the longstanding backlogs of our NPDS permits. However, for that program and for that progress to be sustained and to address other components of our permitting work that have gone under resourced. Because of that deliberate focus, additional resource investments are still needed to ensure a timely and quality service for all of our permitting functions. Specifically in this area, we are considering a package for the next budget cycle that would request a second third of the additional resources needed. We'd identified in 2019, but this time with a particular emphasis on WPCF permitting. As well as stormwater permit development. Also, compliance assurance and inspection resources for all permitting types. As well as increased subject matter expert capacity, particularly around biosolids and pre treatment work. As well as hydrogeologist support for permitting activities that have a groundwater nexus. Under this general banner of permitting work, we are also planning to address some longstanding capacity issues. For both our onsite direct service work and WPCF onsite permitting activities.
Excuse me for a minute, Ryan. Director Whitman.
Actually, Chair George, if I'm going to let Ryan, if we could let Ryan finish this piece that he's talking about right now, then I do want to come in and talk about. One aspect of it. Go ahead, please.
Sure. I was just going to note that our WPCF onsite permitting activities specifically support. Businesses as well as multi unit residential areas such as mobile home parks. Requests for additional resourcing needs to address permit and inspection backlogs in these areas have gone unmet during the last two budget cycles. Enhancements or in some cases restorations of positions that had been lost during prior economic downturns. Would provide critical services to rural and underserved areas, including improved complaint response and technical expertise for training and natural disaster response. I do want to note that in contrast to most of the areas of work that I'm describing on this slide. Which would depend on general fund appropriation support, most of our permitting work is supported by a split of fee revenue and public funds. And therefore, fee increases by a rule would be necessary to support new resources. Before moving on to the next bullet, Director Whitman, did you want to comment about our permitting work specifically or something else?
I do. Thank you, Ryan. And I want to jump in here again to emphasize the work on. WPCF and onsite. So what does this acronym mean? You know, the the WPCF permits are are non federal water quality permits where we're not generally. Have any discharge into a waterway. So a lot of land application. Which is a very common practice in particularly in. Eastern and Southern Oregon. And then onsite, which can be everything from the individual septic system to. A group system or a system for a commercial use. So in the in the federal water quality permits, the NPDS where all the attention has been focused. We've been very successful and have made great strides in reducing the backlog in that area of permitting regulatory work. And we need to keep at it. We're, we have. Consent degrees that we need to comply with in terms of the continued progress there. But for particularly for rural parts of the state in eastern and southern Oregon. And for our rural communities, this other work is really important and has been under resourced for years now. We, and this relates to concerns around groundwater quality also and impacts on rural residents. That are drinking out of individual wells in particular. So. There, you know, we talked about environmental justice earlier, but this is, this is an area where. We're really particularly concerned about impacts on rural residents and want to make sure that. Drinking water for those residents is being protected. And the Health Authority, Oregon Health Authority has responsibilities in terms of the state's drinking water program. But their primary focus is on is on community drinking water systems. Cities and small communities. The individual wells don't get a lot of attention. And so this is an area where we are paying more attention. We need more resources to really make sure that people are being protected. And and we also have had a growing backlog of permitting for the WPCF land application permits. And that is concerning also and want to want to turn that around. So I wanted to emphasize this particular area because we don't talk about it a lot. But for many parts of the state, this is actually a really important part of. Protecting protecting our households and protecting our residents in those areas.
Thank you, Director. Well, and while we've stopped the presentation, I'm just going to throw out a question that that I often revisit when we're talking about upcoming budget goals. And water quality, the department has been focused in a kind of a variety of different ways on TMDL implementation and how we can advance that. When working with our partners, you know, sometimes in either agriculture or forestry, one of the things we hear is that we don't have many resources, you know, dedicated. To that, we don't have much funding for that, where it's under resourced. So we, of course, can only really represent our own budget. But I often ask in your communications with other natural resource agencies, is this a priority? Are they seeking those resources that we so often hear aren't present to work on their side of TMDL implementation? So if if there's a place in the presentation that that we could speak to that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair George. That is a perfect segue for the next bullet on my list here. This third area specifically does address some capacity challenges that have been identified by our TMDL and non point source areas of work. As was the case with the permitting package, we do plan to carry forward several requests from 2019 and 2021 that have not yet been authorized. This includes staffing to improve policy coordination with sister agencies like ODA and other designated management agencies. As well as increased capacity in our regional offices to support more effective and efficient TMDL implementation. This package may also include dedicated support for efforts in the Klamath Basin, specific to modeling needs and TMDL implementation in that particular area. To your specific question, I can't speak for our sister agencies, obviously, in terms of how much they support this compared to their own particular agency request budget needs. But I can say that there's extensive coordination and discussion about capacity issues. And it's particularly around data management. And the expectations that some of our partners, both agencies and other partners for on the ground TMDL implementation work. That they have for data management needs from DEQ. So, yeah, that is definitely a recognized area of need and a big theme for us to carry forward. The fourth bullet on our list involves a multifaceted approach aimed at addressing groundwater quality concerns in some parts of the state. First, in recognition that the state established a framework for groundwater quality management over thirty years ago. And has never really undertaken an assessment of how that system is working. We would like to propose a legislative concept to establish a statewide multi stakeholder groundwater quality task force. To evaluate current practices and to make some recommendations for future improvements. Second of all, we'd like to propose some revisions to existing groundwater quality testing requirements that are associated with real estate transactions. In order to improve reporting and management of that data. These testing requirements that are involved with real estate transactions in aggregate should be accumulating a wealth of important information. About groundwater quality conditions around the state. But we've learned that a very small proportion of the data is being reported in a manner that can be effectively utilized for assessment and decision making purposes. And third, we are considering a proposal to request some additional staffing resources that would improve DEQ's related. Groundwater quality management efforts specific to the Lower U Matilla Basin groundwater management area. And finally, this last bullet on our list is not built around a specific program area within our work. But instead is based around a theme of different requests for water quality planning and preparedness resources related to climate change impacts and resiliency. Specifically, there are four positions or areas across multiple program areas that we are considering requesting. This includes a potential technical expert to support marine water quality standards development, particularly around ocean acidification and hypoxia concerns. Second, a water quality analyst that would be dedicated to assessing the factors that are contributing to harmful algal blooms. And management strategies that may limit those, the occurrence and severity of those events. And third, a restoration of an integrated water resources strategy position that we were lost during budget reductions in 2019. And lastly, a dedicated resource that would work across multiple program areas to coordinate. Support for natural infrastructure and water reuse strategies. So I'm looking forward to further input and discussion with stakeholders, with our sister agencies and with you. As we further develop and refine the scope and magnitude of the water qualities, policy option package and legislative concept requests that we're considering. So with that, unless there's specific questions that I can handle right now, I'd handle, hand over the virtual talking stick to Abby for land quality.
And before we do that, Vice Chair Brasso.
And this is a good question that Ryan, not for you, but maybe for Richard. And and I don't, I don't expect to go too far in this, but it's just seeing, I mean, hearing just that you talked about, Ryan, the groundwater. And I know it's been a minute since we've touched on groundwater and there's a lot that we probably need to come back to there. There's, you know, this is the portion of our, the agency's work that is so heavily general fund, you know, general fund funded. And it's, it feels hard knowing what kind of consistency. It just, I started seeing this and knowing that it feels like a bit like this area seesaw a good bit in terms of whether we have consistency of funding. And it's a, it's a, it's a long term challenge to the program. And once upon a time, we talked about what is it, what does it look like long term within, within this agency to. Figure out how to stabilize funding for our water quality work. So I don't know, Richard, if there is any, it's something I think it feels like we at some point need to revisit. Because I appreciate that we have opportunities to build back up our water quality program. I hate the idea of losing that when when the next hit comes.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Brasso. Yeah, this is the dilemma of general fund funding is that it's, it really is a double edged sword. On the one hand, we really appreciate it when the legislature makes those investments in the agency. And those those general fund dollars tend to be somewhat more flexible. And and tend to be used for things where there's broad public benefit appropriately for for general fund dollars. The downside, as you, as you note, is with with economic cycles, when there's a downturn in state general fund revenues. Those positions tend to be the last and tend to be the first to go. And so we, we have problems with stability of a program when it's too dependent on general funds. I, you know, my personal thinking about this is twofold. One. We have had some success in getting the legislature to also dedicate some lottery funds to this work. And the lottery fund dollars can be, tend to be a little bit more stable than the general fund dollars. So that helps. That's one way of helping with that problem. The other way frankly is is a bigger conversation about federal funding. And. You know, I, I find it kind of surprising that the federal government has not, and EPA has not devoted more attention to groundwater issues. And groundwater quality. I think part of that is the Clean Water Act itself. Focuses much more on surface water quality and it's the Safe Water Drinking Act that. More recently has. Brought resources to some of the water quality issues with regard to groundwater, but those two, those two fundamental federal programs. Don't really address what we call source water protection for groundwater. What are, what are the sources of pollution and how do we limit those and and control those? So it's a frankly, a little bit of a flaw in the federal system that is reflected in a lack of federal resources for that work. We, Oregon, along with a number of other states is working with EPA to try to bring more attention to this issue. You. Changed the rules, some of our rules for our clean water state revolving fund to allow. Some limited access to that resource as a way of funding. For failing septic systems. Those are the sorts of things that we need to be working on addressing to, again, tools to. To limit those sources of pollution to groundwater. And so I think this is an area where we really want to push. On USCPA to work with us to develop resources for this work. And that comes back to the budget piece. Those federal resources tend to be a little bit more stable. And so if we can make this a package of how we resources work, federal, state. Lottery, general fund, maybe other sources. I think that's how we address this. But we, if you heard from Ryan, what we really want to do is set a table for all the interest in. In groundwater issues to talk about some of these issues and. Develop some collaboratively, some approaches to resourcing this over the long term.
Commissioner Slusher.
Thank you, Chair George. I was just wondering if you think that EPA's revised definition for waters of the US could impact that? Like lack of coordinated focus that you referenced between the Clean Water Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act? Or do you think that that isn't going to have much of an impact in this area as it relates to groundwater?
Yeah, Commissioner Slusher, I don't think it's going to have a major impact because. Of course, the the WOTUS definition is focused on surface water. And the regulatory program under the Clean Water Act is focused on surface water. So I don't, I don't think the. So I don't, I don't think the conversation going on nationally and, you know, the case pending in the Supreme Court is going to affect this in a major way. It could have some impact on the regulatory authority to control sources, surface sources that affect groundwater, but I, I don't think it's going to be a big part of it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Deputy Director.
Just briefly, I want to make a quick connection also back to bullet number two with regard to, to groundwater. So you know, the, the fourth bullet Ryan was describing was kind of our need, as Richard said, to set the table to get everybody involved, really look at what data we have and sort of refresh that broad look. The WPCF and onsite permitting programs though are a current tool that we have. So if we really can put some more effort into that tool as well, then that's some on the ground progress while we're looking at the bigger picture. Okay, should we move on to our next topic, land quality and Abby?
Thank you. So thank you and good morning, Chair George and members of the commission. I'm Abby Beduris, Legislative Analyst for the Land Quality Division. In developing the Agency Request Budget for the Division, we centered around the themes that you see here, including resilience in response, revitalizing communities, achieving sustainable materials management as laid out in the 2050 Vision, and rightsizing programs. The needs I'm sharing here are a result of deep dives into the current and future needs of the land quality programs, which include emergency response, hazardous waste, environmental cleanup, underground storage tanks, and materials management. The land quality division is very different than air and water, which you just heard from. With each of the land quality programs having separate funding streams, statutory requirements and goals. It spans from food waste prevention to cleaning up long ago contaminated areas like the Portland Harbor. I'm going to start with emergency response, a pro, the program that responds to spills of oil and hazardous materials statewide. DEQ receives over fifteen hundred incident notifications from the Oregon Emergency Response System each year, representing the largest volume of reports managed by any state or local agency. DEQ receives and responds to notifications of reportable releases twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Just since January first, we've already responded to a hundred and sixty-four releases such as a large tux bill in Kusby a week or so ago. Some are routine and some require on significant onsite response. The program also has statewide emergency preparedness responsibilities. The program needs to augment our regional spills response capacity. This will increase our ability to respond to spills as well as follow up on how spills were addressed. The request will seek general funds to support additional field staff in each of our regional, each of our regions. If this does seem familiar, it is. We've sought similar requests over the last several biennia, but have not yet been successful despite the significant need. Moving on to revitalizing communities, the Environmental Cleanup Program is seeking two budget requests, one routine and one more focused on environmental justice. The cleanup program protects human health and the environment by identifying, investigating and remediating sites contaminated with hazardous substances, including petroleum. The program's objective is to improve sites to the point where no further cleanup action is necessary and return them to productive use. First, the program needs to replenish the industrial orphan site account to fund ongoing investigation and cleanup of contaminated sites where no other funding is available to address the risk. These funds come through bond sales funded by general funds. We typically seek these funds every four years, but our last request in the twenty-one legislative but approved budget only provided for two years of funding. So we'll be back again this round. And then recognizing the need to support and engage with historically underserved communities that are disproportionately impacted by systemic disparities, we're exploring a new approach to brownfield cleanups. Brownfields are property where expansion or redevelopment is complicated by the actual potential or perceived presence of environmental contamination. Every city and county in Oregon, whether urban or rural, has vacant, underused and potentially contaminated properties. Most of the cleanups to date have focused either on the most urgent needs or the properties where the owner or developer has means. This leaves a, leaves a gap. The concept still being developed would build upon, build up a community-led and agency-supported program with environmental justice and equity focus, utilizing a community-based advisory committee to identify, assess and clean up brownfields using an EJ-focused lens. Moving on, over the past couple of years, several years, materials, the materials management program has engaged with this commission both on recycling modernization and the twenty fifty vision for materials management in Oregon. Their program will be seeking positions to continue to implement that recycling bill that passed last year, Senate Bill five eighty-two. These positions were anticipated when the bill was considered and will be funded with by fees paid by producers of printed paper and packaging. In addition, the program has identified several positions that are needed to implement existing materials management programs that are under-resourced to achieve the outcomes both in regions and headquarters. This would be funded with exist, existing other fund revenue. In addition, the materials management program will be evaluating and update to the Oregon Electronics Recycling Program or E-Cycles, our oldest extended producer responsibility program here in Oregon. And then finally, I want to touch on a program that's reached the end of its useful life. The, the dry cleaner program was created in, by the Oregon Legislature in nineteen ninety-five in order to create a cleanup fund paid for by the dry cleaning industry and to otherwise exempt dry cleaning owners and operators from cleanup liability and to ensure the cleanup of contamination resulting from dry cleaning facilities. At that time, the dry cleaner industry estimated there were about five hundred dry cleaners in the state and estimated it would generate an annual fee revenue of a million dollars to do the job. The dry cleaning industry has declined over time and fee revenue has declined with it. There now are fewer active dry cleaners, down from five hundred to about a hundred and fifty in twenty twenty-one. Total program revenue continues to decline at about ten percent a year. The dry cleaner program is no longer financially viable. The fees don't cover administration and we do not have sufficient revenue for future cleanups. Conversations with stakeholders have not supported a fee increase to generate sufficient revenue to implement this program. So we're working on a proposal that will sunset the program, support the use of less toxic dry cleaning solutions and eliminate the use of perchloroethylene in dry cleaners. Lots more conversations to go to work out how that will go. I want to close by sharing the enthusiasm of all the program staffs and managers have for the work ahead in these programs. We're just now beginning what we plan to have the robust external stakeholder outreach on all of this that I've described and look forward from input from others to develop these ideas. Thank you.
Nancy, I think back to you.
Great, thank you, Abby. And I don't know if there's any questions for Abby, but we can move on to the next slide and this, oh, I guess we'll go to the next slide. Okay. So I'm just going to touch on a few items here. So these are our agency management and sort of some of the cross-program functions that don't necessarily fit in one particular program. And these, you know, items honestly tend to be a little bit less exciting, less, you know, they get overlooked by the legislature, but we really want to keep bringing them forward. So one, we've talked about environmental justice a few times. That's going to be a major focus and it may be nestled in our agency management, but it will be supporting programs throughout the agency. Second, I talked a little bit earlier about the lab and we are making a one-time request this session, but we have ongoing needs to ensure that we have a regular funding to replace equipment that needs to be replaced or to update it or to repair it. And we just don't, that's just not a part of the regular budget. So we've really got to address that. And I think address, you know, staffing so that we really do have the support staff that we need at the lab for them to function at their highest level. Another area is adding capacity for our Office of Compliance and Enforcement. Another area that the legislature tends not to be excited about funding those positions, but that particular office has tremendous workload and we really need to add an additional staff or two for the Office of Compliance and Enforcement. And then finally, you know, we've sort of talked about, you know, just sort of the support staffing across the agency. And these are really sort of the behind the scenes functions that we don't always see like IT and procurement and HR. We also are building out our diversity and equity work at the agency. So that's where this would be, these folks would be housed. So these are going to be things that will be requesting these agency management functions, not always, but tend to be funded through indirect funds. So, so that makes it a little bit of an easier ask sometimes with the legislature. So that's agency management. Why don't we move on to our final slide? And I'm not sure if we're even on, I'm not sure where we're at in terms of the schedule, probably a little off schedule. So.
You're a little over, but we're doing all right.
Okay. Well, I will, this is the last slide and I just want to touch on community and stakeholder engagement. And, you know, one, invite you, if you have feedback or recommendations, it's really important to us, I think, to have, you know, a very robust process. It is always important to us, but I think in particular this cycle when we are going into an unknown in terms of a political environment, I think we really want to have a solid conversation with the public and, and with our stakeholders about the needs of DEQ. So we want to connect early and often. We want to make sure that we reach impacted communities and that we don't just sort of think of the traditional folks that we always talk to, but that we're going to reach deeper and that we really want to create as many opportunities for access. And of course, we're still meeting remotely primarily. And on the one hand, that's great because more people can join those meetings, but we also lose a little bit of that more one-on-one connection. So, you know, hopefully over time that will change and we can get out into actual communities a little bit more. I think we all really want to do that. I know that the programs sort of mentioned that they hold a lot of different sort of program level stakeholder meetings where they really dive into some of those particulars and those are really important to us, but we're also going to be doing some agency-wide meetings. We have one coming up on February eighteenth and then probably April is another date that we will set and perhaps others, but we want to start to share information, but also not presuppose that there may be things that we haven't thought of and there may be priorities out there that we really need to hear about. And then I think we're, you know, want to see, we'll be paying close attention to our public forums with the commission. I know you didn't have a lot of participants yesterday. I think that's often when people aren't upset about something. They're not coming. But I think we'll probably start to see more of the public showing up at our EQC. And that's a great place for people to share their views with us and with you. So that's kind of wraps up our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions or get any comments. And like I said, you know, if there's anything you want to touch base with us on later, we welcome, we welcome your feedback.
Director Whitman.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy and staff. Great, great presentations. I want to emphasize this is our own internal thinking about priority areas, but we very much want to hear from you all, from, from commissioners. And today is an opportunity, if you've got any high-level thoughts, but we know you'll probably want to reflect on this and talk to us and we can do that at a subsequent commission meeting. But I, I just want to invite commissioners, if you have individual thoughts, please feel free to reach out to me or Leah Felden or Nancy and talk with us about your thoughts informally. And we want this to be interactive and not just one way with us coming to you with a kind of pre-baked set of ideas. So with that, I'll get out of the way and see if you have any early reactions for us.
Vice Chair Barasso.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation and, and it's always, I think, because I feel like we're always doing budget stuff. It's always unclear when we get, when it gets in, but I, I'm starting to get a better sense for this now after the years. And it feels like actually this is probably the right time for, I guess, I, I think this is for fellow commissioners around starting to think about what, what, sharing our thoughts earlier at this point, so, so that agency can, can really think through them and, and offer, offer their perspectives. Just knowing sort of the resources that, that may be available both at the state, the federal government. You know, a, a big part of me is just thinking about one-time asks and where those one-time asks can be. I, I always, I've just had a greater hesitancy around long-term asks and, and where that sets us up. But, but I am thinking around particularly where we have those one-time asks. I was happy to see that, that you've got things there related to the lab and, and making improvements there. And I'm just thinking about what are other things that can help the agency do its work better that, that kind of fall in that line of system improvements, in particular, given the range of new policymaking we've done in the past few years and a lot of our focus on the permit system. And this balance of giving clarity and having improved processes so businesses can navigate those. I'm thinking about what one-time asks can live in that realm to support that. And I know you all talked about permit modifications. So that's just, I don't have a specific thing I'm putting there. It's more just, just sharing that out there and, and looking forward as, as we hear more on this for, for that point to be kind of spoken to, to the extent that you all are thinking about those. And and I just, because you all talked about permit modification, that's an area where I'd love to understand that more. We, we've, we've done a lot and it's, it's always a point where we say, it's, it's a desire to bring more clarity to what both our permitting systems and, and for businesses to understand how to navigate that. And it's, it's an area that I would, I'd love to just understand with, with more specificity how we're thinking about that permanent modification work.
Commissioner Kyle.
Yes, it's just my response at, at this point, at kind of the high level is I, I do like all of the directions that are being proposed. In particular, some of the areas that hopefully will be more successful on this session is in kind of the disaster response programs. We've, we've discussed that in previous years and haven't been successful. And that is a, a small group of people that do a lot of work. So if we can try to bring a lot of focus there, that would be great. Same thing with the lab. There's a small number of people doing tremendous amount of work to support all of the analyses that are needed. So making sure that the lab gets sufficient budget. And then also making sure that we do and are able to stand up some of the new programs like the recycling rules. That's going to be breaking new ground for Oregon and also the nation. And so making sure that we are well-positioned to make sure that those programs are successful will enhance the long term. So I really do appreciate all of the areas that are being covered and wouldn't necessarily add anything to this list at this point.
Commissioner Schlescher.
Thank you, Chair. So I think that the air and water quality programs all seem incredibly important and I definitely need to spend a little bit more time kind of internalizing this information because right now it just all seems incredibly important. And I have a hard time really thinking about what needs to be prioritized. Um, but, but I, I do agree with Commissioner Kyle. I think that the emergency response is really important. And I'd like to learn more about those funding streams, what funds are available, where the gaps are. You mentioned that the orphan site fund is empty, I think is what I heard. And that seems pretty alarming. So, um, yeah, I'm just interested in learning more about that and where those gaps are and where there are opportunities to raise funds. Because it's an area where you can wait and not put funds aside to deal with emergencies and then you have an emergency and you're in a, a lot of trouble. So.
Yes. Well said, Commissioner. And, and, you know, I know still being relatively new to the EQC and of course, Commissioner Addington returned to us. One thing that we want to be sure to, to let you know is that we're very fortunate that our staff is incredibly generous with their time and investing it in to help us understand, you know, certainly something like this budget and legislative requests, but our next agenda item, which is significant as well, which is our rulemaking agenda. And, and as we come up on these complex decisions that come before the commission, please know that you are always welcome to reach out to our coordinator. And, and, and she will always help us set up time with staff to brief us, to answer questions, to follow up. So just please know that that is a resource that's available to us and that we're very fortunate that our. So just please know that that is a resource that's available to us and that we're very fortunate that our staff is incredibly generous and more than happy to set up meetings to make sure that we really get our questions answered. We really feel that when we come to the table, we've got all the information we need to make the best decisions. Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. And I I don't know. I mean, I know that I come at some of these things a little differently, but I just want to say that I really do appreciate the work that the department does and recognize the importance of this work. And so I really, I liked this presentation. I felt like, you know, my prior involvement on the commission, I feel like I was always like in the middle of the budget cycle. I never could quite get my hands around it. So it feels kind of good to start here and be able to think about some of these things. And I'll just echo what I heard others say, just not to minimize anything that I heard here, but the ones that always do stand out for me, emergency response is a big one for me. And I just think that's one of the things that you don't know how bad you need that until you need it, right? And I think we we need to be prepared on that front. The permitting backlog, dealing with that is up there for me too. I think that helps everybody with stability and knowing what they need to be doing around the state groundwater work, the lab. And so I, I don't have any red flags on this. You know, I'm not a not a huge fan of fee increases, but I also understand that we have to pay for things and there's certain things that have to happen. Services need to be paid for. So I will look more at those things and I'll probably have questions around those items, but I really appreciate the presentation.
Chair George, I wonder, I was going to ask Abby if she could quickly clarify on the orphan fund, just since Commissioner Schlesser brought that up. Abby, are you?
Yes, thank you, Chair George, members of the commission, Abby Beduris. And so the orphan site fund is not yet empty. We project out usually four years. So, because these are long, ongoing and often very large projects. So if we don't replenish it in the 23, 25 legislative session, it will reach empty. So we're trying not to get there.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. Does that? How do you estimate that? Is that based on sites that are undergoing remediation right now? Or, I mean, are you anticipating like what if a new orphan site comes along this year or next year?
Thank you. Great question. Sort of all of the above. We have ongoing sites that have ongoing monitoring and maintenance that we need to do. We have sites we know about that we're working on or queuing up to work on. And then we try to be always sort of looking out for what the next thing might be. So we're preparing and it does become a bit of a moving prioritization effort or some things, some things we have to do, we have federal and other commitments and some things we might have to move around within that to make sure we're using the funds that we have, prioritizing them. And we do look at our ask each time to see how much money do we think we need over the next four, six, eight years? So that we do have enough to get to the sites that are needed and don't have a source of funding.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. And we know that we will be hearing back from you. So I think as Commissioner Addington shared, we're always in some phase of this cycle. And so we know we'll be hearing from you again. At this time though, I think we had better move on to looking forward in regard to our rulemaking agenda.
Stephanie, do you want to bring that presentation up? Well, while she is doing that, maybe I'll just very quickly introduce this next item. So again, I'm back. Nancy Bennett, Policy and External Affairs Manager, and I'm here today with our Agency Rules Coordinator, Emil Hanidi. And Emil is going to be presenting most of the material for this item. And the purpose really is twofold. One is to provide a short overview of our agency rule development process, which I think is always kind of a handy reminder, even if you've been through a lot of rulemaking, it's it's helpful, I think, to understand all those steps that go into what you see at that end of it. And then to share our rulemaking plan for 2022 and hear feedback and comments or questions that you have. And I think we really want to get back on track to presenting the rules agenda for you at the beginning of the year so that you can really sort of see what is to come and share some feedback with us. So with that, I think I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Emil and let him take us forward.
Well, thank you, Nancy. Chair George Commissioners, my name is Emil Hanidi. I am DQ's Rules Coordinator. And this will be very quick, high-level overview of our rulemaking process. We can always go into much more detail if need be, but so we'll just get into it here. So DQ's rulemaking process is structured so that we meet all applicable rule requirements related to rulemaking that we conduct rulemakings in a way that is open and transparent to the public and result in quality rules. Here are the high-level legal requirements that we must do for every permanent rulemaking. We must provide notice to the public that we're conducting a rulemaking. We must provide the public with the opportunity to offer public comment on the rulemaking. We are required to hold public hearings for all permanent rulemakings. When we put a rulemaking out on public notice, we tell the public how they can submit their comments to us, how they can participate in the public hearing. After the public notice, comment period and hearing, staff will take all the input received from the public during the comment period and amend the proposed rules if needed and provide responses to all comments received. If the commission votes to adopt rules, DQ will file the rules with the Oregon Secretary of State. Once the rules are filed with the Secretary of State, they are enforceable as law. DQ must retain all records related to the rulemaking for at least 10 years after the entire rule has been repealed. We rarely repeal entire rules or all rules associated with rulemaking, so we effectively keep a record of the rulemaking forever. So what do rules do? Rules are an extension of legislatively adopted statutes and have the power of law. Statutes are often broad and rules at detail within the scope of the authorizing statute. Rules tell affected parties what they may, must, or may not do. Next slide. I'm sorry. I forgot to tell Stephanie that a few times. So next, yeah. So all rulemakings go through an internal process at DQ before moving forward. First, how do we know rulemaking is needed? A program may identify a need that could only be met through rulemaking. There may be new legislation that requires DQ to conduct a rulemaking to implement. There may be federal changes that require us to conduct a rulemaking to align our regulations with theirs. Or the commission may have received a citizen petition and directed DQ to conduct a rulemaking or response. After the need for rulemaking has been identified, the program determines the scope of the rulemaking and gets program manager and division administrator approval to move forward. After this, the program complete a rulemaking planning form that gets presented to the leadership team for approval. Once the leadership team approves a rulemaking moving forward, it will be added to DQ's official rulemaking plan and work will begin. These are the steps that occur before rulemaking will be placed on the plan that we're sharing with you today. Next slide. So on average, your rulemaking will take 10 months to a year to complete. This varies depending on the level of complexity and the amount of public input needed. The largest amount of work usually occurs preparing and conducting the advisory committee meetings at the beginning of the rulemaking and then considering and responding to the public comments received during the public comment period. Next slide. So advisory committees for rulemakings are not required, but DQ convenes advisory committees for most rulemakings except for the most simple. Advisory committees help DQ to craft better rules because we seek input from those most likely to be affected by the rules. Advisory committees help DQ to obtain stakeholder input, address technical issues, and aids in transparency. House Bill 2993 that we took effect January 1st of this year added new requirements for agencies to follow when conducting rulemakings. All state agencies are now required to include statements on how their proposed rules will affect racial equity within the state. DQ will ask advisory committees to provide input on this question, which will not only help in crafting a better statement, but it will also help inform DQ if DQ needs to make changes to the proposed rules. Another requirement of that same bill is that rulemaking advisory committees must represent the interests of persons and communities likely to be affected by the rule. DQ always tries to appoint committees that represent a diversity of those likely to be affected by the rules. The legislation added that affected communities in addition to persons needs to be represented on the rulemaking advice committees. As a result of this legislation, DQ is making sure that the interest of affected communities are represented and not just affected persons. If an advisory committee is convened, it must review the fiscal impact statement DQ has drafted for rulemaking and assess the fiscal impacts on small businesses. Next slide. So here's a look at the rulemakings currently moving forward. This table shows which months advisory committee meetings, public notice and public hearings are anticipated to occur for each rulemaking along with the EQC meetings. DQ anticipates on presenting the items for consideration. The cells containing the letter E denote when we anticipate bringing a rulemaking before the commission and meeting date shown under the respective months at the top. The orange colored rows are rulemakings that are more simple in nature. The next agenda item will be talking about delegating rulemaking authority to the director to adopt these two specific rulemakings in 2022. The full rulemaking plan containing more detail for each listed item was including the materials you received for this.
It looks like Emil might be having some technical challenges. I think, oh. Are you, there you go. Are you back? You cut out there for a minute. So maybe you were back up for a minute and repeat what you were just planning to say.
Did I finish this plan slide?
You were not quite almost through it. Yeah.
Almost through. So I don't know where to stop. But the orange colored rows are the simple rulemakings. The next agenda item will be talking about delegating rulemaking authority to the director to adopt these two specific rulemakings in 2022. And okay, the full rulemaking plan containing more detailed information was included with this agenda item. And we can answer any questions you may have at a future meeting about any of the, any of the rulemakings.
And is there a next slide? Okay. So that it was, we said it was going to be short and it's short. To just kind of again, provide that sort of update to you. Maybe we'll go back one slide, Stephanie, just so we have this. And I guess the question I have, maybe before we move on to the next item. Are there any questions? Are there any comments? I think we also, you know, if want to know where Commissioner, more in Commissioner involvement is desired and great Director Whitman is going to comment on this.
Yes, Director.
Yeah, thank you, Emil and Nancy both. So just a few things about this slide of note. Your next meeting is the very end of March, beginning of April. We've got one rulemaking coming, air quality definitions, rulemaking. And then as we've mentioned a little bit earlier, in May, we've got the rulemaking for the EV rebate program, which isn't a particularly important one that's in the middle of the rules advisory committee process right now. We also have potentially the Title V fee increase rulemaking. And so we'll talk about that in the next agenda item in terms of that being a possible rulemaking to delegate to the director. In July, we've got asbestos fee increase, which I think has, I'll just say robust engagement with stakeholders. And so there are likely to be lots of opinions about that fee increase along with an important fee, not fee rulemaking, but rulemaking around what's called principal forgiveness for the clean water state revolving fund. This is where we are expecting an infusion of federal funding later this year for this important program and along with that, requirements from US EPA to have 49% of the funding be distributed in the form of principal forgiveness, which in English means grants rather than loans. So figuring out how to prioritize that funding and allocate it is going to be an important part of that discussion. And then we've got a really a slew of rulemakings expected to come to you in September. And that is of some concern to me that we've got too much coming to you at once. So potentially delegating the hazardous waste rulemaking, which is just essentially adopting federal requirements would take one thing off your plate, but we may want to adjust the timing of some of those other rules so that we don't have so much coming to you at one time in September. And then again, November is fairly busy also with an important, fairly comprehensive updating to our air quality permitting rules. The gasoline dispenser rule review and update. And then the aquatic life criteria, which is a statewide rulemaking of really some significance also. So a lot coming to you at the end of the year in particular. And I think part of what we wanted to talk about in this agenda item is just number one, make you aware of that current schedule and to talk a little bit about how to potentially adjust things. It's hard to, it's hard to have things come to you quicker than is shown on the schedule. So part of this is probably a a little bit of policy discussion about can some of these things be pushed a little bit later? And, you know, we'll need to talk to the programs about that also. They have reasons for bringing things when they do. So anyway, I'm just going to leave it there and we'll open it up for conversation.
Thank you, Director. Yeah, I think this is, this is very helpful. And as you say, with, with looking at the very busy upcoming year, important to take a look at this. And for folks who haven't perhaps done as much work with the EQC to understand that, as you say, there's everything from very simple and almost obligatory rulemaking, where there really isn't much of a decision coming before the EQC at all. And there could be a couple of examples. You know, either like you say, a relatively small fee increase that again, while we never, you know, really look forward to fee increases. On the other hand, they are required in most cases to simply continue the operating of a program. Or another example would be to maintain a federal delegation, we have to adjust a rule to a new federal level. There's really not a lot of discretion there. Either you do it or you potentially don't get to run the program anymore. There's really very little decision or discretionary, you know, leeway for the EQC. Everything to extremely complex rulemakings as have come before the commission recently. And so the commission's time and time studying up on these things can vary very dramatically. Vice Chair Brasso.
I think, I think my answer earlier was, was answered, but maybe just in seeing the schedule, I really, this is great to see just first. Thank you to the agency for pulling it together. Nancy is great. I would be just, I, a question is, are all of the rulemaking that is not highlighted in orange, you know, are, is all of it, are we expecting are we expecting to have a briefing for each one of those prior to those coming to us? Obviously we won't for the next ones, you know, in March, but I just didn't get a sense. And maybe that is the question that's part of the discussion here. I know that there are ones we know we're going to get briefings, but I didn't know if some of the I know that there are ones we know we're going to get briefings, but I didn't know of some of these others. Given this kind of conversation on some of these more simple ones, if we should expect to get briefings on anything that is highlighted in orange.
Yeah, that's a great question, Vice Chair Brasso. And I'll answer it in a general way. We haven't set the agenda yet for the March meeting, but as you, I think probably know from experience, but particularly for Greg and Amy, if we've got a rulemaking coming that is complicated or controversial, we always, virtually always do a two-step approach to those rulemakings where we do a pretty in-depth briefing of the commission about what are the issues involved and some of the background on the particular rule at a, at a commission meeting. And then either at the following commission meeting or sometimes a couple of commission meetings later will actually bring you the proposed rule for you to make a decision on. So I think here, I've not talked to staff about this yet, but I think for the Clean Vehicle Rebate Program, we're probably going to want to do an informational briefing for you at the March meeting. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund Principal Forgiveness. One is really going to depend on how much clarity we have from EPA and whether we know enough to be able to give you a meaningful briefing or not, but that, that may be a two-meeting agenda item. And then moving on into the things that are in the fall. Certainly the commute option rulemaking that we are doing together with Oregon Department of Transportation and DLCD is one that probably is a two-step, the Clean Fuels Program Expansion is a very significant rulemaking, definitely a two, at least a two-meeting briefing for you. And then just skimming down the water quality permitting updates. That's going to be definitely a two-meeting item. And probably the aquatic life updates also. We already did one informational briefing for you, if I remember correctly, on aquatic life. But I think we'll be, we'll be coming back and probably revisiting that again. So that gives you a little bit of a sense. We will, we will prepare a version of this that includes that information, Vice Chair Brasso and other commissioners, so that you can have a sense and that'll help you, I think, think about level of commission engagement.
Well, this is a lot to absorb as well. It might, folks might want to reflect on this a little bit and then also, you know, provide additional thoughts about what support they'll need. And we can do that after the meeting. Any other comments or questions now, Director?
Yeah, thank you, Chair George. And so just to be clear, there's no, we're not looking for an action here on this. This is informational for the commission, but as you all absorb this and think about how you want to be engaged in rulemakings, feel free to set up time to talk with us and we will we'll revisit this at the next commission meeting and talk more specifically about lead up to decision meetings and what you want your, your involvement to be. Some of that discussion that we had in the context of the TMBL by rule agenda item yesterday, we'll do that more generally, not just for the TMBL rulemaking that are coming next year, but also to talk about this. And then just to cap this off, Chair George and commissioners, again, this is work that we want to do with you on a regular basis and we want to get into a cycle where we bring this information to you in November of every year for what's coming at you the following year. And so that we can discuss, how do you want to be engaged? When, when are things coming and do we need to tweak any of that? And then really, the other piece I, I would like you all to be thinking about. Are, are there things that are not on this agenda that you have questions? Well, why aren't we doing a rulemaking in this area? So this is not just DEQ coming to the commission with what's coming out of the programs, but this is again, a two-way conversation with you about, do we need to be doing or thinking about doing a rulemaking in a particular area that you don't see?
Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. Richard, the only thing, I appreciate looking at this too. The only thing I would, and I'm, I'm thinking out loud and just sort of planting the seed with you guys. The only thing I wonder about this, is there a way to incorporate public comment in a more directed way? In other words, if we know at some point in a cycle on a rule that we dedicate some portion of a meeting to a particular rulemaking as opposed to sort of the scattered, scattergun approach?
Thank you, Commissioner Addington. I would hope that this, again, if we get into a regular cycle and the public understands that, that when we come to you in November, let's just say in November of this year to talk about the 2023 agenda, that we have public comment on that and we invite public ideas about where there needs to be more opportunity to engage the commission also. And so that we, we really make this a robust process for everybody to have input into how we structure that so that we're hearing from you about your thoughts on, on where you want to be more engaged. And we're also hearing from the public where they think it's appropriate. And that we can make a conscious intentional decision about those things at the front end as much as possible as we plan your, your work really for the coming year.
Did that respond to your, to your question, Commissioner Addington?
Well, I think that's good. I, I guess I'm just a little more specifically wondering about, okay, let's just take an example of number four, zero emission and electric vehicle rebates. And if we get into a, a cycle where we know that's coming in May, maybe maybe at the May meeting, maybe at the March meeting, we, we say, okay, this is the section of our program, we're going to hear comment on this issue. On this rulemaking. Because as it is now, I think we get public comment and, and it's great, but it's on anything. And, and you're always going to have to have that and, and, and the general public comment. I'm not saying you eliminate that, but you have a dedicated spot for a particular rulemaking. Because what I find is like, I am interested in some of it. I take some notes on some of it, but it's something that already happened in the past or something that's not on my radar screen just yet in the future. So I'm just wondering about specific public comment on particular rules.
Yeah, Commissioner Addington and Nancy, I know you've got your hand up too, but I, we do want part of this to be a discussion about when, which rulemakings do you want to set up in a way so that you can hear directly from the public about the proposed rule? That is part of this. We do that sometimes right now and we kind of use our judgment. But I think having you involved in that and helping make that decision is absolutely part of what we're trying to get to here.
Yeah, and, and so I think that's a good point. As you say, we do occasionally do that now. Another alternative, sometimes it has to do too with how many things we have to get on an agenda for a meeting, right? But if, at the same time, if commissioners know that there's a particular rulemaking coming up for which they're particularly interested, like making sure we have notice of maybe when that comment hearing is going to be. Then if commissioners are interested in listening in, even though it might not be during the regular EQC meeting, if they can accommodate that, then we have that opportunity. I mean, I think honestly, we always have that opportunity, but having that teed up, you know, for us on a regular basis, so we can kind of remind ourselves, oh yeah, you know, next week is that rulemaking public comment period. I think that would really, really help us out in that regard. Nancy?
Yeah, I was just, well, Director Whitman already kind of addressed it, but I was going to say, I think one of the things we are interested in is identifying when we would want to hold a hearing alongside perhaps a briefing and then have a hearing so that you get to hear that direct public input. And we have done that. I think it's been really interesting and successful and I, I agree with you. It's nice to have sort of the public comment focused around a particular topic instead of just, I mean, it's also, we want, anybody can come bring any topic as well. That's, that's good too, but I think those focused public comments is very useful to us as well. And I can just also work with Emile and others on the team around how do we, we could think too about public comment and how to make, make you aware of opportunities to engage more, I guess. And so just note that we're, we'll work on that.
All right. Thank you everyone for this presentation and commissioners, please feel free to think about this a little bit more and follow up after this meeting. And again, I think this is an example where, while you certainly are of course, always welcome to respond directly to staff, but I would ask that you share your thoughts with Stephanie, our assistant, so that they can also be shared with the rest of the commissioners. It's often great to hear what your fellow commissioners are thinking about these types of things. So that would be great. We are due to take a 10-minute break and I am going to propose we do that and come back at 11:15. Does that work for everyone? Great. All right, Stephanie, if you can go ahead and, and pause our recording, we will be back at 11:15. I'll wait just one more minute and then we'll get underway. All right, well, so now we get to take our previous conversation to the next step and actually consider where it may be appropriate to delegate certain rulemaking authorities. So we will turn our agenda over now to Director Whitman and Gary Vrooman. Welcome gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair George. For the record, Richard Whitman, DQ Director. So you just saw in the last agenda item, the schedule for rulemaking for the remainder of this year and frankly, how, how busy it is. And considering that, we have been talking simultaneously about both how to get the commission more engaged in rulemakings and also trying to think about how to, how to help manage workload here and how to prioritize for you as, as well as, as for, for DQ. And so this next agenda item is a proposal for you all to consider. And it would utilize general authority that you have as to other boards and commissions generally to delegate actions to an agency director or another named person to actually take actions on your behalf. And because the general matter, the EQC is our policymaking body. It is the, the body that is appropriate to be adopting rules and policy in the agency. That said, there are some rules that have much less by way of policy questions embedded in them than others. And as was mentioned in the last agenda item, fee increases, really there, there are a range of types of fee increases. You had some very significant proposed fee increases that came before you all back right at the time that the pandemic hit in 2020, where you decided to defer some of those fee increases. And those were important, those were exactly the sort of policy questions that is very appropriate for the commission to be considerate. There are other fee increases where, particularly where the legislature has already approved a fee increase. And you are essentially just ratifying a decision that is made, already been made by the legislature. That particularly comes up in the context of where the legislature has authorized a, what we call a CPI fee increase, which typically is a fee increase of up to three percent per, I can't remember if it's per biennium or per year, but up to three percent. And left it to the agency only to make a decision about whether to actually go ahead and institute that fee increase or not. Often there's a limitation in that, that sort of legislative authorization that it, it's a fee increase for, for cost increases in the agency of up to three percent. So the agency needs to document that our costs have actually increased by at least that amount as part of the rulemaking. But once we've done that, there's not really much of a policy decision to make. So that's one area where I think we are looking for opportunities to take things off of your plate. You can always decide you're not comfortable with that and say no. Another area, similar sort of area where there are decisions that need to be made on rules that at least in our judgment, don't involve a lot of discretion or policy is where the federal EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, has changed rules for a program that Oregon essentially acts as the agent for US EPA in implementing. And of course, we here in Oregon, we are the implementer for most of the programs under the Federal Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act, RICRA. I'm leaving some out, I know. Sometimes those, those things do involve policy questions and where the state has gone beyond what federal law requires. Other times we're simply passing on a requirement that US EPA has, has adopted as a change in federal rules. So there are two rulemakings coming later this year that we believe do fall into that category where there's very little policy involved in the, the proposed rule. One of those is a CPI fee increase that is going to be proposed for the Title V program in air quality. And another one of those is a rulemaking relating to hazardous waste rules. And Stephanie, if you can actually bring back up the slide from the prior agenda item that has the rulemaking plan, I think that might be helpful for, for this conversation. And while Stephanie is doing that, I also, we do have Gary Vrooman here to answer any legal questions you may have about this. In particular, authority to delegate and then conditions on the delegation, kind of steps we need to, to go through in order to do this correctly. It's my general understanding that there does need to be a formal action by the commission approving the delegation. We have to, I believe, file a form with the Secretary of State's office that evidences that documents that delegation. It's usually signed by the commission chair. But with that, Gary, anything you want to add to this?
No, that, that's all correct, Director Whitman. This is Gabe Rumman, Chair George and Commissioner, EQC Assistant, or Attorney, rather. That's all correct. The specific authority is, is just No, that, that's all correct, Director Whitman. This is Gabe Vrooman, Chair George and Commissioner, your EQC assistant, or attorney, rather. That's all correct. The specific authority is, is just a general provision under the APA, which is ORS 183325. And it does require the delegation being writing and filed with the Secretary of State. The, this is, this is an unprecedented, the EQC has delegated some rulemaking functions in this, in this kind of vein before, including, I believe in July of 2017 is the information I have, to the, there's a, there's a provision of the APA that allows rulemaking for kind of minor corrections to rules. So like typos and administrative errors, or there's a list of them in statute, what they, and those don't require kind of the full notice and comment period. And the EQC has previously delegated that rulemaking authority to the director, and I believe that was subdelegated by the director to the rules coordinated. So there, and I believe also the EQC has delegated its authority to appoint advisory committees to the director before, and that's a similar sort of delegation. So there's a couple of examples of kind of this authority being exercised before. This would be the first one for kind of a full rulemaking that's subject to kind of the full procedural requirements of the APA. So if you have any other legal questions, I mean, that I'm happy to answer anything you have there. But you, you know, you do have, if you, you do have authority to condition it, if you want to, like, I mean, to the extent you want to be involved or create conditions along with your delegation, I think you can do that. You know, obviously, doing that puts a little bit more of the work back on your plate, so it might undermine the rationale a little bit. But you know, that's entirely up to you how you want to go about doing that.
Final thing, Chair George. Personally, I view this very much as a pilot. What I would like to do is try this on a rulemaking or to see how it goes, see if we do run into problems, then we may have to reconsider whether this is a good idea or not. And frankly, if we run into a high level of controversy on one of these rulemakings, I probably would want to have a conversation with you all, like, do we want to change course here and kick it back up to the commission? So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Addington.
So, thank you, Richard. So it would need, the authority would be for a specific rulemaking. It wouldn't be a general blanket. And then can you just touch on how it's, I'm just going back to the conversation yesterday about TMDLs and how, you know, you had, you had the authority or currently have, or had the authority to do rulemaking for the TMDLs, right?
Commissioner Addington, that's correct. And in, and to back up a little bit again, the concept here is that going forward in your November meeting every year, we will bring you something like this document, this chart. And we will talk with you about are there things that you want to delegate or not? And that would include Commissioner Addington, the TMDLs, as well as other things. And you, so you can see what's coming for the year and decide, maybe you can do everything that's on there, and it's a fairly light year, or maybe it's a busy year and you do want to talk about delegation. So again, doing that in a public setting where you can see it and ask questions about each of the rules and decide not only the delegation issue, but also what you want your involvement to be in each of the rulemakings and all the things that we talked about in the prior agenda item, and really see that as a whole. It's really, it's setting kind of a work plan, at least with regard to your formal responsibilities around rulemaking for, for the commission in a way that we haven't really fully done before.
Well, I certainly appreciate this kind of rulemaking plan and layout. I completely agree. I think well, the commission's considering where it may be appropriate to delegate these decisions. But as you say, just honestly, for the planning of the work in the year ahead, and commissioners really evaluating where they want to invest their, their time or attention, where they think they could learn the most or be most helpful, I think is very good for, for kind of this group and taking a look at our time commitment over the course of the year. And making it an annual process to build it into our calendar, so it happens every single year, I think are really good steps. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments about this idea? Commissioner Kyle?
I just want to kind of go on the record and say I support exploring it as an option because like what we did yesterday, as Greg mentioned, you know, we're, we're taking on more responsibility now for some of these other rulemakings with the TMDLs, which is going to take up more time. So being able to offset some of that with perhaps some of these just performa kind of adjustments seems like a reasonable tradeoff and effort where it makes sense. Assuming that it, it does work. So I think it's a reasonable approach.
Thank you. Deputy Director Felden?
Thank you, Chair George. Not to jump in the middle of your discussion here amongst the commissioners, but I just want to just clarify a question you had Commissioner Addington, and perhaps I didn't hear it right. You, you were saying that the director already has, I think he said, rulemaking authority for TMDLs. And I just want to clarify for the record, it's a, it's a different authority under statute. It's an order authority that the director currently has for TMDLs. So then yesterday, what we did is also say that we can do TMDLs by rule. That's what you agreed to yesterday, but we would still be bringing those to you unless you delegated the authority to do a rulemaking for TMDL. I hope I didn't confuse things more, but.
If I could, yeah, thank you, Leah. Just to make it clear, as part of this, going forward, as part of this process, we would bring you all the, all of the TMDLs that are planned for the coming year. So that in addition to deciding are there things you want to delegate, you can also, on the TMDL front, decide which ones you want to take on by rule and which ones you want to kick to the director to do by order.
Yeah.
See, I see heads nodding. I think that's, that's clear. Go ahead and let us know if it's not. All right. So personally, I, I think I'm very in line with what Commissioner Kyle shared. I think it's because it's well worth considering, you know, where there, it's a matter of maybe updating federal criteria that are requirement of maintaining the program. Those are the kind of things to me that almost do seem like, you know, more of a notice type process. It may be appropriate rather than, like you say, the, the rulemaking role. It's either a matter of update to the federal minimums or don't, don't implement the program. So I, I think in those types of circumstances, if we can take a rulemaking off our plate, it's certainly worth considering. Any other thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Schlesser?
Thank you, Chair George. I'm, I'm in agreement. I think it makes sense. I, I like the idea of a sort of a case-by-case approach, reviewing each rule that we would be delegating authority to adopt. But I don't have any major concerns about delegating authority to adopt rules that are pretty much just checking boxes and ensuring that we're complying with our federal obligations.
Thank you. Commissioner Addington?
And given what Leah just said, thank you, Leah, for that. I just want to note that I think Richard's getting the better end of the trade here.
Fair enough. Well, so then, not hearing any, you know, robust opposition to these kind of performa rulemakings, there's two specific suggestions for the commission's consideration that have been presented on the upcoming, for the upcoming year. And thank you, Stephanie. You've just teed up the action. So let's also, I think we've kind of been considering this at the large scale. Let's consider this proposal here. Do folks have comments or questions more specifically about these two items that have been recommended to the commission? It doesn't look like it. Anything further, Director, from you on this? So if, if the commission is willing to consider these, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you. I, I moved that the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission delegate the following, following two 2022 rulemakings described in attachment A to Agenda Item H to the DEQ Director for a decision. One, the 2022 Title V CPI Phase II Fee Increase Rules, and two, the 2022 Hazardous Waste Rules.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we require further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify same sign? Motion carries. All right. Thanks very much, everyone. And we will anticipate doing this review on an annual basis. All right, we are ready for the Director's Report. Director Whitman?
Thank you, Chair George. You've got me again. And I am, this is my norm with the Director's Report. I am not going to take up your time reading the written Director's Report. I'm happy to answer or try to answer any questions you might have about the written Director's Report. I am going to talk about several things that were raised yesterday, a couple, at least one of them by Commissioner Addington. A couple of things that were raised in, in the public forum by Mr. Kirsch and I believe it's Ms. Gladden. And I also want to talk about just a couple of things that have been in the media recently. So these are not in any particular order. But maybe starting with Lake Abert and Commissioner Addington's question about Lake Abert yesterday. So this has been in the news media recently in a number of different outlets about the, the fact that lake levels in Lake Abert have been declining for some period of time and are reaching levels and the, the overall surface area of the lake is shrinking significantly. Also, that there's quite a lot of concern about the ecological health of Lake Abert and just what's happening out there. And I, so I am going to talk about this at a high level without getting into any of the details of work that is, is going on between agencies to talk about the situation. But just to be very direct, what's going on at Lake Abert is the combination of climate change and Western Water Law and prior appropriation. And the river that supplies water to Lake Abert is fairly heavily appropriated for irrigation and consumptive use of water and the ranch that was developed several decades ago. And really, the combination of all those things has resulted in reduced inflow into the lake. At the same time, obviously, with temperatures rising and the sustained drought that we've seen in eastern and southern Oregon, it's not a good situation. So in terms of what, what can be done about it, as far as DEQ goes, we have, do not have any authorities that we believe are directly relevant to the situation. We don't regulate water rates. We have some authorities over situations like this where there is a federal license or permit, you know, for instance, in the federal energy regulatory or FERC dam context. This is not a FERC situation, FERC doesn't have a license. The US Army Corps of Engineers historically issued some dredging wetlands permitting that is somewhat relevant to this, but that permit was revoked. And so there's no federal permit at this point for us to have any authority around water quality certifications. So we don't have any tools that are directly relevant to this situation. And frankly, you know, this is going to come down to if people really want to do something about this, and I think many people do, it's going to take work with the landowning water using community to see if there are ways of increasing inflow into the lake. So at a high level, that's, that's the situation. And Commissioner Addington, if you've got other questions, be happy to talk about it. But it's, it's just another, frankly, another manifestation of climate and the stress that that's putting our systems under. Okay, so that's Lake Abert.
Just a second, Director. I think Commissioner Addington does have another comment or question.
Yeah, sorry. No, I, I appreciate it, Richard. I just, you know, I, I think in some cases, I mean, I agree with you, the drought is exacerbating everything. But I mean, the, I guess I'm, and I don't know a lot about it, and I should probably just be careful, but the, you know, an earth and dam was built and allowed by the state and the feds or whoever did it went back when it was permitted. I don't, I mean, a couple of decades ago or more in the name of, you know, wildlife preservation, I think. I mean, it was Ducks Unlimited or, or somebody trying to increase wetland habitat. And so there's trade-offs, right? And now we're seeing the problems with that. So it just, understanding changes in the climate and the drought. But I'm not sure that's all being used for irrigation.
Yes, Commissioner Addington, that, that particular operation, if I understand it, is, it is privately owned. The dam that you're referring to was built, at least in part, with public funds. And it was a project undertaken really with Ducks Unlimited and some sponsorship also from ODFW, as I understand it, trying to improve waterfall habitat. Whether 30 years later in retrospect, in, in the context of climate change, that was a good idea or not. That's a conversation that, that, you know, needs to be had frankly with ODFW and, and maybe Water, the Water Resources Department. I'm not trying to avoid issues here, but that's just, the, the other piece of this is that is a part of the reduction in flow into the lake, but I, there's a lot of irrigation that goes on as well. So looking holistically at the situation with, you know, trying to get to a solution, it's similar to some other basins that you and I have worked in where there's just too much demand for too little water. Yeah.
All right.
Okay. So responding to Mr. Kirsch's comments in public forum yesterday, he, he was asking for clarification on when we are going to provide an informational presentation to the commission. And I'm, I use that word, word informational on purpose. I'm underlining it because I want to make the point, we are not in this presentation. because I want to make the point, we are not in this presentation planning to talk about the aquatic life rulemaking, fish life rulemaking, which is going on in parallel separately and which will come to the Commission later in the year. We also are not planning on talking about the water quality certification in FERC license that exists for Pelton Roundbutte. What we do want to talk about and really invite Deshute's River Alliance to participate in is stepping back for a moment and talking holistically about where the basin, the lower part of the Deshute's Basin is in terms of fisheries, multiple fisheries, not just trout and steelhead, but all of the fisheries. And where are we at in terms of water quality and not just frankly in the very lower part of the river, but the lower part of the river, Lake Billy Chinook in the tributaries to Lake Billy Chinook, and so that, again, we can really help provide some context for the Commission about all the moving parts and all the interests and all the values, important values that we're trying to address. We, not just DEQ, but we societally all are trying to address in this area, and so we will and we will invite the Confederated Tribes of the Warm Springs to participate in that along with Portland General Electric, the operator of the Pelton complex and probably others, including the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, but maybe others in that presentation. We don't have a specific amount of time yet, but it will be, we are shooting for either March 31st or April 1st for that presentation, the next Commission meeting. And looking forward to that opportunity to really give the big picture of the lower basin and everything going on there. So let's see. So there also was a question, and I don't have the name written down, at the end of public forum about air quality monitors and wildfire. And so just to note, we are in the process of, we've received funding in the last session for additional air quality monitors to provide information to the public around wildfire smoke and wildfire smoke levels. It's my understanding we are making, we're working through the deployment of 20 additional monitors around the state for wildfire smoke purposes primarily. And I will note, just because I think it's probably of interest to the Commission, our sister agency, the Department of Consumer and Business Services, or DCBS, which includes Oregon OSHA, is also in a rulemaking around health standards for workers related to wildfire smoke levels. We are talking to each other about their rulemaking and our air quality index, which is the trigger for some of the requirements for worker protection. We're talking about monitoring. And there is perhaps some interest in additional monitoring because of the state being more proactive in protecting the health of workers in terms of their exposure to wildfire smoke and requirements for protection in terms of masking and respirators under certain circumstances. So it's a good example of cooperation and coordination, and DCBS is expecting to complete that rulemaking in April, I believe. But again, it's another interplay on the wildfire smoke piece, not, we don't just work with Department of Forestry. We're also working with the Health Authority and Oregon OSHA and others on these issues. Okay. Now I have three other things I wanted to just raise with the Commission for your information. There's some information about some of these in the written report. Two of them, I'm going to ask Deputy Director Felden to kind of take the lead on, and those two, and Leah, I'm giving you a heads up, and then I'll do the other one first. Port of Moro. Just what's going on with Port of Moro and the Lower Yumatilla Groundwater Management Area. So Leah will talk about that a bit. And then another facility that's been in the news quite a bit lately is the JH Baxter Facility in West Eugene. And so I've asked Leah to talk about that as well, a little bit. But before she does that, I want to talk about a third facility, which is Xenith Terminals in Portland, which was in the news yesterday with a decision out of the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on review of the city of Portland's decision about the interplay between the Xenith facility and the city of Portland's comprehensive plan. And so I'm not, again, we're in early days of reviewing that opinion from the Land Use Board of Appeals, and of course, there may be an appeal or multiple appeals from that decision to, from the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals to the Oregon Court of Appeals. But in essence, the Land Use Board of Appeals found that the city did have an obligation to review whether Xenith's current operations are compatible with the city's comprehensive plan, and in particular, some new provisions of the city's comprehensive plan relating to fossil fuel facilities. So that's, that was one part of the Luba opinion, essentially affirming that that decision does need to be made. The second piece of the opinion was that the city needs to do more by way of explaining in its findings how its comprehensive plan relates to the current operations and just provide more explanation of whether it is or isn't compatible with those planned provisions. So we have not heard from the city what their thinking is about this, but in the meantime, the reality is we do not have a land use compatibility statement from Xenith, which is a necessary precondition to us issuing a modification to their air quality permit, and so there is a separate proceeding, a contested case proceeding before us, which may come to you eventually, looking at the DEQ side of issues related to Xenith, but I guess the, you know, the way I would summarize all this is the consideration of Xenith's current operations will continue before the city and the state, and stay tuned. So with that, any questions on any of those things before I turn it over to Deputy Director Felden to talk about Port of Moro and JH Baxter?
Not seeing any.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Director Whitman, Chair George, members of the Commission. For the record, Leah Felden, Deputy Director at DEQ. So let's start with the Port of Moro. I think you've probably seen some of the media around this as well. Both of these topics I have have had a significant amount of media around them. So the Port of Moro, really the action that instigated what's, what you're hearing a lot about in the media right now was our penalty to the port. It was a $1.3 million penalty in January, and this was specifically for overapplying wastewater containing nitrogen to the agricultural fields in the, in the area, and this is in the Lower Yumatilla Basin, which I think you all know at this point is an area that has been designated by the Commission, many Commissions ago, as a groundwater management area. The other part of that penalty was failing to monitor. So we can get into a little more specifics if you have questions around that, but essentially, on the one hand, it's it's applying wastewater in excess of what the permit allows, and on the other hand, it's monitoring for how much the soil and the crops are able to take in. That's the ongoing monitoring that occurs is, you know, how much is in the soil? Could it accept more? How much are the crops taking up? Can the land accept more? So the port, they collect wastewater from several facilities in that region. Food processors, storage facilities, data centers, and they're a significant, you know, economic engine in the community. They're a significant core in terms of the businesses in that, in that region. They've had, you know, a permit with us for many years, and this has been a typical practice in terms of irrigation. So the irrigation that occurs, as we've touched on though, has to be according to these permit limits. If it's not, that is where we can run into problems with the nitrate reaching groundwater. And in this region, you know, the region is very taxed in terms of the nitrate in groundwater, and we have monitoring data that that shows that, and so this is a significant concern for DEQ. So, you know, where do we go from here? We need to talk to them, as we already have, regarding the enforcement action. We need to talk with them about their permit going forward, and another thing that we have going on right now is that they had requested a permit modification for additional lands to be added to their permit for irrigation. So, you know, there's a recognition that that more land is needed for the amount of wastewater that they are bringing in. So we're in conversations with them about what does that permit modification look like, and what else needs to go into that permit for compliance purposes going forward? I think, you know, we're at a place where we're trying to solve what has been really a bit of a perennial problem. I just want to acknowledge briefly for myself and for DEQ that the passing of the port's executive director, and that was recent. And we, you know, really want to we, we really sympathize and empathize with the community going through this, right? The family, the community. The Neal family is a really important family in this community, and so I think the port is also going through a lot of change right now, and they're trying to manage, and I'm sure there's, there is shifting of positions going on, right? So we also acknowledge that they are some folks are in a position of learning that may have not been as privy to, to all of these discussions in the past. So we're working with them. We're sort of in the middle of both of those processes right now. Um. I think I want to pause there and see if you have, yeah, questions on that. Yeah, Commissioner Addington. Chair.
Leah, on thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, the port is a big deal in that area that, you know, the amount of things going on in that part of the state is impressive. But I understand the concerns and the issues. I just wondered about on the, when you're looking at permit modifications. Do we have the ability, so if I understand, you know, you want to apply the right amount of this wastewater so that the crops and/or the soil is utilizing the nitrates, right? The nitrogen. If it's a wet winter time when the crops are not using anything, that's a problem, right? But I guess my question is, is do we have the ability or the sophistication to look at years like this where you might have a really dry January? The ground is not saturated. I'm not sure agronomically what's happening with the crops or ground cover or whatever, but can we look at it that way, or does it just have to be it's this date to this date that there's no application?
Uh, yeah, great, great question, Commissioner Addington, and the answer is yes, we can do that, and you know, to a large degree, their permit already does that. You know, it anticipates that there's going to be more ability in the crop-growing season for uptake of those nutrients than there's going to be in the wintertime. And the port and all of the permities that engage in this practice, they actually submit monthly monitoring reports to us. So they themselves are looking at this data as long as they're collecting it on a monthly basis, and so they are also able to you know, really determine what can be applied and when. And I think, you know, in the first instance, we have to look at are are there crops that are being grown in the winter season? What's the, what is the beneficial use of the water that's being applied? And I think the agency agrees that there can be a beneficial use even in the wintertime. But we really need to right-size where, where is the line between a beneficial use and an overapplication or a simply a disposal of wastewater that that ground is really not able to handle. And again, in this particular area, it's a groundwater management area, has been for, I think we're at about 30 years now. And it's a region where we've not seen a lot of significant progress, and so we really have to take a look at what are the different inputs, what are the different situations that are adding to the, to the issues there and manage them to the best of our abilities.
Right.
Okay, that's continuing. Alright, I'll move on, Chair George. So Director Whitman also mentioned JH Baxter, and you've, I think you all have probably seen some of that in the media recently as well, and that certainly an evolving situation. I don't want to spend too much time on the, on the history there, but that facility, it's a wood treatment and preserving facility. It's been in operation since the 1940s. It's been around for a long time, and it's in an industrial-zoned area, and directly across the street is a residential-zoned area that has grown up around this facility. So right off the bat, we certainly have issues in terms of those neighbors being so, so close. A reminder that they are in Lane County, so DEQ has authority and issues, their permits regarding solid waste and their permits regarding stormwater, and we manage cleanup issues at the facility. But because they're in Lane County and we have a a Lane County Regional Air Protection Authority, ARAPA, they handle their air permit. That means they also handle their process through the Cleaner Air Oregon Program. So just wanted to give you a little authority and who's on first lay of the land there. We've been engaged with JH Baxter for a few years now on a cleanup on their own property. And so we've found high dioxin levels on their own property that they are working to clean up. We've also had an enforcement action with them that was issued in March of 2021, and that had to do with how they were disposing of some of their wastewater that that included dioxins. So as we've been working with them on this cleanup and determine the levels of contamination that were on their property, the natural next step for our cleanup program is to start sampling outward, is to, you know, move out beyond that initial nucleus where we found contamination and to really keep moving out until we find that there is not contamination at an unacceptable level of risk. So we started doing that sampling last fall. The sampling results came back to us in January and showed that for the initial seven properties that were sampled closest to the facility, three of them are at a level that needs to be cleaned up immediately in terms of their dioxin contamination. Three are at a level that should be cleaned up, but don't require quite as much immediacy in terms of their risk level. And one property does not necessitate cleanup. So we are working right now to figure out the quickest way to get going on that work. I'll come back to that in a second. Additional work in the sampling realm means going out further. So that will be the next rounds of sampling is to go out again, further and further on properties in the appropriate direction of the wind that modeling shows us that the contamination would go and sample until we don't find unacceptable risk on the, on the cleanup of these properties side and trying to get that to that as urgently as possible. Our cleanup program is, is generally predicated on responsible party cleans up and responsible party pays for cleanup. And of course, there are instances where a party is unable or unwilling. In this case, JH Baxter has told us that they are financially unable to conduct the cleanup. So there's a process by which we, you know, verify ability to pay and we go through cost recovery processes. However, it does not make sense to go through those processes and to stall the actual cleanup for the residents that are, that are nearby. So we will be proceeding with cleanup of those properties. There's some discussion with EPA. I think there could be some resource from EPA to help us, but, but regardless, our cleanup program is going to be initiating those cleanups very soon. And we have told residents that we intend to have the first three properties cleaned up by summer. So the, let's see, I should add that JH Baxter did notify us, and I think they've notified relatively publicly at this point, that they have stopped operations at the moment. So they are still going to be operating a groundwater treatment system that's part of the required cleanup for DEQ of their own property. So we'll be continuing to have a regulatory relationship there as well as looking into this cost recovery piece. There is, and I, I've been chatting virtually with staff to find out a way to describe. There's a great story map that staff have developed on this that I think is just very helpful to anyone who's wanting to understand a little bit better about the company and just sort of the, the history there. So what they're telling me is the quickest way to find that story map is to go to DEQ's homepage and just type in JH Baxter into the search. And that's the first thing that will come up. It's also can be found under a community engagement link, but it's, it's a very helpful product that the communications staff have developed. Questions?
Yes, Commissioner Schlesser.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Deputy Director. That was really informative. I think this is a pretty alarming situation. I had a question about the way that sampling works. So for a facility like this where they've been in operation for so many decades, when you go in and sample, are you taking like one sample from each property? Are you taking multiple samples? I'm thinking about, you know, my own yard where there are some areas of my yard where the soil has probably been replaced many times. And there are some areas where it probably hasn't been. So I'm just curious about that. And then also in the Director's Report, it mentioned that the Trainsong Park showed elevated levels of dioxin as well. And when I look at the map, I mean, there's an entire residential community between the park and the facility. So is that, is your plan to mostly move in that direction for sampling? Are you going to be taking samples from, you know, a scattering of other neighborhoods that may be further out just to see if, because the winds don't always blow in the same direction, obviously. So yeah, if you could just tell me a little bit more about that, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. Thanks for the questions there, Commissioner Schlesser. And actually, I should have addressed Trainsong Park, so that's helpful. And, and your two questions actually are, are related. So for sampling, the cleanup team, they will do sort of this initial screening that, you know, tells us, okay, there, there's certainly an issue in at least part of this property. You know, no doubt about that. But as part of the cleanup process, they will go in and do some additional samples just to see if there are certain parts of the yards that are hotter than others. And so that, that is part of, of the process, you're right. Trainsong Park, thank you for raising that. Trainsong Park, as well as a couple of other areas, had been sampled as part of this initial effort as background. That, that's what their, the intention was, was to see what should the background level in this area of West Eugene look like compared to those where we might expect to find contamination? The Trainsong Park contamination was a surprise, really, to, I think, to staff and others. The, the maps that show wind patterns from JH Baxter and where we would expect to find contamination really don't reach as far as Trainsong Park. And so I would say right now, our, our cleanup staff would say we don't have reason to believe that Trainsong Park is necessarily contaminated by JH Baxter. So, you know, as a reminder, there are other industries in that area as well. And Trainsong Park is also right next to a railroad. So there could be other sources of contamination. Another thing, as the, you know, parks often are, and as you mentioned, you know, with, with your property, it could have been that that park was filled at some point with, with soil from, from another place. And so we may not even really know the source of contamination for that park. So to connect these, the next step for Trainsong Park is to do more sampling in different places around the park and, and really get more information about, is the whole park really contaminated? Is it just a few hotspots? What, what is needed there? And does the, does the additional sampling tell us that we should be fanning out then from the park and in that area between the Trainsong neighborhood and the Bethel neighborhood? I, I hope that helps.
Um, yeah, that's helpful. It's also equally alarming to think that there are other sites around Eugene where there's dioxin contamination, where, you know, we don't necessarily know where it came from. So I'm glad to hear that, you know, the agency is doing that level of sampling. I did want to just clarify one thing. So you had mentioned that there was one residential property that didn't, where the sampling didn't determine that there were levels that were necessitated cleanup. So for that property was, were there multiple samples taken at that property? Or just was that based on, you know, a single sample?
Commissioner Schlesser, I could venture an answer on that, but I don't, I don't want to do that. Let, let me get back to you on the exact number of samples taken at that property. I want, I want to be precise. Ah, and perhaps our council knows.
Yes, Gary Bruman.
Yeah. Sorry, my, having trouble with my videos there. Sorry, Commissioner Schlesser and Chair George. My, my recollection, my understanding was that, I believe there were composite samples and there were, there were many samples taken from these properties. The way it normally works in the cleanup processes is the, the responsible party here, JH Baxter, will submit kind of a sampling plan to DEQ, which will be approved and it will be, you know, they don't just take one sample. It'll be representative, representative of the conditions on the property. My recollection is that these were composite samples and that there were 50 of them per property, but I, that might not be correct. I get a lot of cleanup sites and I might be getting confused. And a composite sample is where they like mix it all together and then they get the level, like the average for the property. So we, so there, there, there were more than one sample and whatever the sampling plan was approved would be, would have been done to be representative of conditions on the property. But, and we can get you specifics on that if you want.
And, and Gary, our staff are being very helpful on getting word that you're correct.
Good. I'm glad my memory worked on this one. That's not always the case.
Uh, no, thank you. That's really helpful. I'm really just trying to get an understanding of how the process works and how far this contamination might have spread and how many properties might be impacted, how big of a problem this is. So it's really good to hear that the sampling was so extensive. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other highlights or questions about the Director's Report? Director Whitman?
Yes, thank you, Chair George. I, again, was just going to see if there were any questions or issues that people wanted to hear from us about. I think that's it from our perspective in terms of the high-level things we, we wanted to convey to you all. We do have one thing we want to bring up with the commission, which is the next commission meeting and the dates we want to talk about. But first, let me pause and see if there were any, any other questions.
Well, if no one else is going to bite on that, I know we will certainly be hearing more about this in the future. But if you wouldn't mind spending a little bit on the aquatic life criteria rulemaking and, and what's underway now with the Advisory Committee, I wouldn't mind hearing a little bit about that because we know it's going to be a significant piece of work.
Thank you, Chair George. I'm going to do my best from memory here. And Stephanie, do we still have the, the document that has the rulemaking plan? And if so, could you bring it back up? That'll help.
And Richard, I'll just pipe in here quickly. Jennifer Weigel is, is in the meeting and is, is able and willing, if you would like her to speak to this a bit.
Thanks so much. I didn't see her as still being here, Leah. So, but let me, let me address this at a high level and then invite Jennifer to fill in a few details. So the aquatic life criteria rulemaking is number 15 here. And we've got an advisory committee meeting happening, happening in April. It's my understanding that there was, I believe, and I'm, there are enough rulemakings going on that I might be confusing things. Didn't they already have their first advisory committee meeting? So as you can see, it makes sense for me to turn this over to Jennifer at this point and she can talk more specifically about where it's at. Thanks, Jennifer.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Director Whitman. Chair George, yeah, the Aquatic Life Use Rulemaking is underway. We've appointed a rulemaking advisory committee meeting. The main purpose of that rulemaking is to update the timing and location for our various fish-based beneficial use designations around the state. Some, just for purposes of context, DEQ has a really, I would say, detailed set of use designations that apply for our cold water fisheries around the state. And that was a comprehensive effort that was first embarked on and adopted in 2004. And we used information from the federal fisheries agencies and then our own Department of Fish and Wildlife as the primary data sources for being able to identify both the locations and timing of, of fish presence, life stages, that then bring with it the temperature criteria. So it's a really foundational part of our water quality standards. And we knew at the time, you know, ODFW continually collects data on fish presence. They bring in other data from other folks, including tribes and other people, other fisheries entities who are also out and collecting data on that. So the effort of that is really to build on the data and information that Department of Fish and Wildlife has to update those, both spatial extent and timing, particularly for the spawning uses for those fish uses. It's also clarifying in our standards, our dissolved oxygen, it's too complicated to get into here, but it's, there's a lot of different moving pieces for how our dissolved oxygen criteria apply and relate to those fish use locations. And so it's also tightening that up and making that aspect of our regulation more clear. Our timing and, as Director Whitman noted, first rulemaking advisory committee meeting was last week. Those rulemaking committee meetings are expected to go through the spring, proposed rule in the summer, and then brought to the commission in November of this year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Commissioner, Chair George, did that answer your questions about that rulemaking?
Yeah, I think it did, and especially for where we are in the process, right? We're at, at the front end, so to speak, in collecting that data. I think, yeah, I think it'll be very fascinating to hear and to see what those updates look like and, and what the implications are. So thank you.
Okay. Chair George, with your permission then, I might take just a few moments with the commission to talk about your next meeting, the, which is scheduled to be March 31st and April 1st. And Commissioner Addington has brought to my attention, and he, he did tell us this previously. And so I wanted to bring it up with the rest of the commission that he has a conflict for that date. And so I wanted to explore a little bit whether there's an ability to move the date with the commission. And Commissioner Addington, are you gone the following week also? That first week in April?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm back. You're trying to say the week, the first full week, April, yeah, I'm here.
Okay. So I think to get a little more specific, Chair George, the question would be for other commissioners whether there's any ability to move the commission meeting a week later into that first week in April, which is, I'm looking on the calendar, the 7th and 8th of April.
I'll just share that I think that would be fine for me, others?
I'll probably have a conflict that I can't avoid the morning of Friday.
Yeah, I hate to be the problem. So I am back, but the 7th is a challenge for me. I, I have at least an afternoon thing scheduled.
What about the 6th and 7th? The Wednesday, Thursday? If we did, if we did a Wednesday afternoon, Thursday morning?
I could shuffle that work.
That works for me.
Vice Chair Barasso, I saw your.
That worked, that, that, that provided that we're ending by five on Wednesday afternoon. That works for me.
Duly noted. Okay, so let's keep this tentative for the moment because I need to check a couple of trap lines here to make sure we don't have something on our end in the agency that's a major problem for that. But tentatively, let's move the date to April 6th, the afternoon of April 6th and the morning of April 7th. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And we will, we will confirm that all with you via email here in early next week.
Thank you. Sorry, everyone.
It's okay. Commissioner Addington, sorry, we didn't bring it up with the Commissioner earlier. Okay, and I also don't know, since he asked specifically whether we still got Mr. Kirsch on, but I will make sure if we are changing the date, that we get an early heads up to him as well. Okay. Well, Chair George, I think unless Commissioners have things for us, that's, that's it for from our end for this meeting.
All right, very good. Before we finish, Commissioners, do you have any other questions or thoughts? All right, doesn't look like it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Does anyone object to adjourning? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn at twelve twenty five. We want to thank everybody who's been a part of our meeting and spent their valuable time with us. Thanks to all the staff for the presentations and everybody stay well and safe. With that, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.